The hour of 7:30 has arrived, so I'd like to call to order this board meeting of District 116, this study session for October the 2nd, 2018. Roll call, please.
Member Hall?
Here.
Member Patton?
Here.
Member Pulaski?
Here.
Member Fisher is here, Vice President Rollins Gay?
Here.
And President Demmett?
Here. Quorum is present, and so any additions, corrections, or modifications to this evening's agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. Well, have citizen statements. If you wish to address the board this evening, please fill out a Goldenrod sheet, whoops, and make sure that our administrative secretary in the back, Lori, has that. I have one, so we'll, and she's bringing more forward. So we'll go ahead and get started. Reminder of the rules, five minutes, please, and please give your name when you come up to the front. And Lori, after you give those to me, if you'll just turn the mic on up there so no one has to fumble with that, or Shawna, could you turn it on for us? Jason's getting it. Thank you, Jason. And I'll take advantage of this opportunity to indicate that we have the rock star Jason running our cameras for us tonight.
Thank you, Jason.
So that the folks at home can watch us. First up is Katrina Rogers, followed by Scott Douds. Is Katrina, oh, she's moving her car. All right, Scott, you're in the room, I see, so why don't we go ahead and get started with you, and then, and we'll do another reminder, because I didn't see very many people get up. If you are parked in the middle over here, you will be towed, so please move your cars. We don't want to be responsible for you getting towed.
Over here or the aisle?
Over here, in the middle aisle.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
Yep. So you need to go on the south side of, north side of our building, or the south side of the building next over, you'll see signs that say District 116. The middle aisle does not belong to us, so.
They sure they have time.
It's not our.
I'm giving you.
Matt, go ahead. Scott, I mean.
No big deal. My name is Scott Douds. I live at 2704 Susan Stone Drive, and I just wanted to speak to the board tonight on behalf of our Facebook group. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, we've had a lot of activity, a lot of parents very interested in ways they can help out, so we're definitely looking forward to that. We did actually contact Dr. Weemelt, and we'll be hopefully contacting Dr. Brown as well with the same thing, but we have something that Dr. Weemelt will speak to a little bit more, I'm sure, but we've started a sign-up for parent volunteers for the school to be there during the day, helping out in the halls at lunchtime. I believe we've had nine or 10 people sign up so far, so we're looking to expand that hopefully to the high school as well, maybe to help out with some of the issues we've been facing, and also just to get a little bit more parent involvement in the schools and the, excuse me, the community in general. Also, we have, we're looking to try to reach out to places like UNCC to see if there are community volunteers that would like to fill that role as well. I don't know if, I know some of you were probably here back in the '90s when Ducky was at the high school. And I remember Ducky, Ducky ran a tighter ship than I think the administration even did. Nobody crossed Ducky, so.
Nobody messed with Ducky.
Oh, no. No, 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 no. That was rule number one. So we're hoping to maybe talk to the people at UNCC and maybe some other community action groups that, that will, and see if we can find volunteers and maybe fill a role similar to that as well. Also, next Wednesday, I'm meeting with various members of each of the PTAs throughout the district, and the PTA council will hopefully be off the ground then, and we're looking to hopefully obviously address some of these issues that we're facing as well, but also get some more collaboration between the schools as far as things like maybe fundraising or fun and field and fun days, things of that nature. But also, one of the big pushes that I want to get from this group if we can is interaction between the students prior to them entering middle school, which again, hopefully would maybe reduce some of the issues we're seeing, because if these kids can get to know each other before they come to the school, hopefully we're, take a little bit of stress off of them, so. That's it, though. I just wanted to kind of, you know, put that out there for you guys, for your information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Did Katrina, Katrina Rogers make it back from the parking lot? Yeah. And after that will be Dr. Underwood.
My name is Katrina Rogers, and my daughter is an eighth grader at the middle school. And we've been involved in some of the issues here lately that has happened at the middle school. One of the things that I am very much seeing, especially out of my student, is there is no faith in the administrators from the past incidents with Woods that has made it to where our students have lost the faith and the trust in the administrators at the middle school. So with the middle school, what I feel is that we need to come up with a way to build that trust back between the administrators and the students. My student has been verbally bullied over the last three years, and every time that she has verbally bullied and she went to Woods the last two years, Woods never did anything. So it ended up coming down to it to where she took things into her own hands. And this year so far, she has not been able to, I guess you could say, put the difference between the fact of there's a new administration in the middle school, because she still feels like there's no faith. There was an incident today, and one of the first things she told me when we got home is the reason why she didn't bring the incident that we were dealing with today up to the administrators is because she did not have faith that they were going to do something about it. So when this child kept coming at her again today, she took things into her own hands. I've told her several times, even in front of Dr. Weemelt and another administrator at the school, that she needed to go to them. I even asked her why she did not go to them. She couldn't tell me there at the school, but once I got her home and sat down and spoke to her, she said she didn't think that they were going to do anything because it had never been done in the past. And when I say these children are verbally attacking her, they get underneath her skin, they find out what's making her tick, such as things as her family or her personal issues. And I would go even as far as to say the child who she had an incident with today was verbally attacking her in a sexually way, making comments that were inappropriate. And because she did not go to the administrators, it turned out to be a bad situation, and I don't blame the administrators for what they did today at all, but we need to build that trust back, where they can feel that they can go to these administrators when they are being bullied verbally, physically, mentally, whatever the case may be, instead of having to take it into their own hands and making it to where their bullies realize you're messing with the wrong child. And I see it all over the Facebook. I'm on Spotted in Chambana, everything. I see it to where these parents are complaining about their children's getting jumped, or their children is getting in the middle of a fight, and it's ridiculous. And it, I agree, it needs to come to a stop. We need to figure out how to do it, and that's part of the reason why I'm here tonight, is because we need to figure out a way to build a trusting bond between these students and these administrators. There's another student that goes to that school that I have several times a week, who made the comment to me and her mother that the reason why she won't go forward to tell the administration is because there's other students who have threatened the snitch clause, that if they go and tell somebody that they're going to get beat up. That's somewhere where they should have faith that they can go to their administrators and this not happen. I don't know how many times over the last three years I have emailed with school board members, Don Owen, the principals, the assistant principals, and made the comment of what was going on in the school. Granted, Woods is gone now, but the students are not looking at that as Woods is gone, that there's a whole new administrator that we have to deal with to see how they're going to work. But it's because these students don't have faith in the administrators. So they feel they have to take it into their own hands, outside or inside of the school. And I'm one of them. I even turned to Weemelt when Scott made the comment about parents being in the school. I will take days off if I have to. I will go in on my days off to be part of that. I will be more than willing to, because I see at home the damage it does to the students because other students are verbally, mentally, or physically abusing people. Thank you.
Evelyn? Evelyn, you're next.
Excuse me? Can I put Dr. Underwood?
Dr. Underwood, yes.
Thank you, Fran.
Tina Hoobrey will be next.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, Ms. Vice President, and the other members of the board. It's good to be before you. I've sat where you sit for terms, and the Board of Education is very, very important. You have made, we were here, weren't we, Eldon Park, when they voted for this new program that we have, the new initiative? We know what, Public Act 099 hyphen 0456, but I think the administrators started doing something even before this. That's why you weren't on the list, if I'm not mistaken. Am I correct? Didn't I see that in the paper? So with the suspensions and all of that. So what did A'Banna do? I love Champaign and A'Banna, because I've been here ever since I was 10 years old, and I'm kind of old now. As I fore stated, let me get back, you know, when you get old, sometimes you kind of slid back, slide back. But I just want to say, when you voted for this program, you, no matter what, you've got to try to get the teachers, the administrators, and the parents and all. This gentleman got up, I don't know him, but he's looking out, Facebook, we're looking out, to try to get parents here, my nieces and nephews and all who are in the schools, cousins and everything else, and I'm talking to them daily, and I am in the building, the high school, the middle school, not daily, but sometime two and three times a week since school started. And I see what people are trying to do, the teachers. Now, I didn't come here as Reverend Doctor tonight. I came as Doctor Underwood, because I'm very well credentialed, and that's what I wanted to say. That's why I wanted to say that, because of the fact, I, I was, well, I am, they call it license now, but it was credential certification as a principal. So I had to observe, I had to read the literature. I've seen some excellent teaching going on in the past, but I'm talking about this year. And I've seen some of the things you want to happen being taught by different teachers from different areas to the young people, of the expectations, and reinforced. I've seen that different classes, in the halls. I've been in the halls doing lunch. I've been on lunch duty. I even decided that I would take those machines, and I'm not that good, when I was walking the halls, because they had mixed me up. And I said, yeah, I'll stay, you know, I don't get, I get hung up on that, you know, just because I'm a classroom teacher. I can walk the halls, because they, I used to do a lot more than that when I was at the university, trying to work on my PhD. I used to make copies for professors. So I'm just saying this, anything that you do is honorable. When I walked the halls and called, anything happened, they got on it just like this. Now, I don't, I don't have to come out here and lie. They got on it just like this, just like this. And they even sent me up there to take something to a student and get, they were on it. Every time I've been at their building, they have been on it. And also, the teachers have been on it, teaching, I've seen some excellent teaching, and some, I told one of the teachers, I said, this is the old way that Mr. Somerville used to do it, because they're not taking anything. Now, if things happen, two or three, that shouldn't stop the whole, they know what the rules are set for, not, they don't have dean, all you have to do is get on the phone and call, before you can say, one, two, three, four. Somebody's there, sometime two people are there. Now, I'm not, I don't have to come here and say something that's not true. I've seen it. They're there, they're trying to do something to help. Sometimes different levels for different things, because they have different professionals, and it's restorative justice concept. Some people like it, some people don't. Some people think there's no consequences, but I disagree with that. So you're only going to give me so much time, and I don't want to go into too much more. Was there anything else I wanted to say, Eldon Park? I've been talking to people all day, all day, the NAACP president, I don't know if she got here yet. Yes? How many years you talked, just the many? Okay, and we've talked all day. Secretary? I don't have to talk to you, because you know, you're one of my babies. This weekend, Project 500, let me say that you were there. What happened? I've got all of these, and I'm not going to go into that. They are, what did Negroes want? That's 50 years ago. 242 arrested. When we saw them, we got doctors, lawyers, bake examiners and all came out of that, what was, what hap, what, help me somebody, because you know I do most. Oh, the president of the Ministry of Alliance is here. We, we watching, we trying to do, we trying to help, we trying, because we know A'Banna is trying to do something. They heard your superintendent on radio, and I have a radio program at 4 o'clock, and this was on at 8:30, 8:30 to 9:00 in the morning. People was talking to me already about that. When, well, in a way, I don't have to say, this is not the first time he's been there, because he's trying to do something, say, what are y'all going to do to try to help to make sure things are working, that the board stick by what they voted for, and give them a chance, give them an opportunity to make it work, because they're doing what the states say they need to be doing. Reverend Meeks, who's down at the state head, I got, he came here, and we had that big killing here, what's the young man's name? And he sat here and he talked to us and he helped, and I know he'll help in Springfield if needed. That's the kind of man he is. Now, let me stop. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there's anyone else that wishes to address the board, please take advantage of this opportunity to fill out a Goldenrod sheet.
Hi, my name is Tina Hoobrey. I teach at Urbana Middle School. I teach sixth grade social studies. Last year was my first year officially teaching at Urbana Middle School. I student-taught there 15, 14 years ago, and I actually left the classroom for a number of years in that time raising my son. I did a lot of things in education, and I actually went back to start my PhD program. And the reason I bring that up is because of the reason I stopped doing the PhD program at that point, because I haven't felt so hopeless in my whole life. When I was sitting in those basement rooms in the education program, learning about the history of and the current state of education, and thinking about all these theories and ways that we can make a difference, and I'm, I'm the kind of person who I just, I want to make a change, and I felt so hopeless, because the system was so big. It was like trying to think about the universe and like where it ends, and if you start trying to think about that, then you go nuts. And so I literally was going nuts, and so I had to back out, and then miraculously, I ended up back in the classroom, and it was exactly where I needed to be. And I'll never forget the day I went home and said, I can't believe the way the stars aligned for me to get back into the classroom and back into education right now, because finally in my life, I felt like I get to be a part of changing public education for the way that it needs to be, for the way that it needs to be for our kids and for our current day, our now, and where we're trying to send these kids. And at the beginning of this year, my in-laws asked me how things were going at school, and I told them how ecstatic I was and how thrilled I was to be part of this courageous, monumental movement that's changing the face of public education in a way that I truly believe we can do. And when I taught in Champagne School District, however, you know, 10 years ago, I didn't feel like I knew where my place was, because I didn't really feel like I could make that change. And then when I was in the classroom trying to, you know, go back to education, I just felt hopeless, and all of a sudden I end up back in the classroom, and here I am, making this, being a part of this change for like, we're restructuring education in a way that truly benefits our students. So I'm telling them this, and they listened to what I had to say, and then they were quiet and started asking me a number of questions, and they were shocked by what I said. And the reason they were shocked, and the reason they were asking me questions, was because they weren't asking me about how I felt about being in the classroom or teaching, they were asking me because what they had seen in the news. And I stay away from certain, I don't watch like TV news, because it gets me a little bit too, so I read a lot of the news, you know, through newspaper, online, and I knew that there was some stuff going on in the news, but what had come to me, my attention was that my in-laws, who don't have kids in the schools right now, had an image of complete horror painted for them. And it wasn't actually horror in terms of how the kids were behaving, it was horror that I was working in a situation that was so terrible. And I'm telling you all this because as a board and as the community that sits here, and I am appalled at the way the media has portrayed the Urbana School District, and I'm appalled at the, at the dialogue and the narration that has been allowed to be formed. I think the minute the media got wind of what was happening and people started murmuring without having half the conversation or half the information, the media grabbed onto this and gave it such a negative connotation that, or you know, what it spin, that we were already up against, you know, up against way more than we needed to be. And now we have so much positive that's going on. We have so much amazing beauty happening in our schools, so many success stories, so many students who are telling me, I got to class on time, and these are kids who have truancy issues, and they're proud of themselves, and they're feeling good about themselves, and they're coming back talking about the groups that they've been in, and they're talking about the conversations that they've had with people who they've never liked before, and they had a conversation with that person and realized they kind of had a lot in common, and they realized that maybe they shouldn't be mad at them, because they had the same situation going on at home that the other student had. And these are the kinds of things I see happening, and the only media clip that I have seen on the TV news in our local media is a blurred video shot of our babies fighting. We have middle school, these are 10, 11, 12, 13-year-old children, and the news, WCIA, broadcast video of that fight. It was blurred, you can't see their, you know, so, so maybe there was no identity issues there, but these are children clearly fighting. And I'm appalled that the news did that, so don't get me started at that, but then there's no counter narrative. And I think that as a community, and obviously as the media who has let us down greatly, but also as a board, I feel like we need to really band together. There's so much good happening, and we have a job to do, and the amount of energy that has been spent arguing about what's going on right now is pathetic, and I'm sorry to be that blunt, but the truth is, I personally don't, I would be shocked if I learned that there are more fights this year right now than there were last year. There were fights almost every day in the sixth grade hall last year, and there were no emergency meetings. Now, I don't have the numbers, so I can't talk, and I'm not trying to say that I know all, but what I am saying is that I think the attention has been brought way too far to one side, and we need to remember our purpose here and why we're here and what our job is. Thank you all for your hard work. Thanks.
Does anyone else wish to address the board this evening? Anyone else wish to address the board this evening? Unlike past practice, I have a statement that I want to say tonight. And this is in response to the months and months and months of input that we've been One of the primary jobs of a member of the Board of Education is to build up a school system, and making critical comments does not aid in that effort. However, I make this statement in reflection of another responsibility of a school board member, to provide an interface between the community and the managers of the district. I make this statement to assure our community that board members have listened, have deliberated, are deeply concerned, and have worked diligently to discern the best way forward to serve all students. I want to begin by reiterating our commitment to restorative practices and the positive outcomes that we hope will come from engaging in those practices. In the winter of last school year, my understanding of those practices involved restorative circles, a deep emphasis on exclusionary discipline policies, and a continuation of our discipline practices, which were compliant with Senate Bill 100 well before it became law. In the spring of last school year, specifically March, the board learned, at the same time that the entire community learned, that the administrative structures of UMS and UHS weren't just being tweaked, but massively changed, headlined by the elimination of the dean positions, replaced with something else. The superintendent's statement at that time was the deans were dropped, but the administration wasn't sure exactly what would replace the deans. It was up to future planning. I and most other board members voiced strong objections, not to the idea of instituting something more in line with restorative practices, but to the process in which this decision was reached. I've been on this board through several evolutions of our secondary administrative structure. In all previous instances, changes were preceded by a lot of building-level discussion regarding at least six facets of any decision of this magnitude. One, analyze the exact problems and issues that needed to be addressed. Two, identify alternative solutions. Three, determine the impacts of each alternative solution. Four, design and deliver in-house professional development necessary to ensure that any change is successful. Five, engender staff, student, and parent understanding and enthusiasm for the change. And six, determine how this would be communicated to the community at large. In April, subsequent to the superintendent's announcement, a board directive was given to the superintendent to slow this process down and give serious attention to the omitted steps in the normal Urbana way of reaching such major decisions. The board warned the administration of the disruptions and difficulties that would occur should these steps not be taken. We were not subtle, we were very direct. Yet the process went on almost as if the board had not spoken. As a sign of our displeasure, at the next meeting, we found ourselves having to refuse to approve some related personnel decisions on our normally uncontroversial consent agendas, unheard of in my 30 years of tenure. And yet, in a short few weeks at one school and even fewer weeks at another, building principals, neither of which are here today, prepared plans with the assumption that the deans were history and change needed to occur immediately. In May, the board reluctantly approved both plans, only after strong assurances that there was appropriate time to hire needed new staff, train existing staff, and maintain order in the schools, three of the major concerns originally raised by the board in April. Sadly, as I go into further detail, many of our fears have been realized. Regarding staffing, today we do have the staff hired, many more staff than expected because of an unusual exodus of not just building administrators, but also of many frontline teachers and aides, caused in no small part by the manner in which this initiative has come about. It is too early to pass judgment on whether the new staff maintains the quality we expect in this community. However, my initial impression is that we have hired some very impressive and capable individuals. They are working very hard to establish the needed relationships and credibility required They are working very hard to establish the needed relationships and credibility required anytime you make a massive change in structure. The problem here is that under the best of circumstances, this takes time, time which, due to many factors, we didn't give ourselves. Hence, the administration, despite outstanding effort, is beset by significant student and family doubts and concerns from all portions of our community. This has created a crisis mentality throughout the district with all the rumors, fear, and misinformation that comes along with the crisis. Turning to the concern expressed about training, for several months, we've had rooms full of faculty, staff, and students expressing grave concerns, basically evidencing a lack of knowledge about how this whole thing is to work. During recent board meetings and briefings, we heard about several professional development sessions since the start of the school year, where the new administrators, new support staff, and central office have devoted unending hours to training, training which the board was assured by central office last spring would occur prior to the start of the school year. In the meantime, employees and students are justifiably confused and troubled. Last Tuesday night, I attended the UHS forum where the current administrative team indicated they were in the process of amending and clarifying procedures and policies, and indeed, they are making much-needed improvements. Unfortunately, many of these amendments and clarifications could have been handled much better as part of a proper planning process prior to implementation. Better late than never, but reactionary instead of proactive, with damages already incurred. Regarding order in the schools, the loss of institutional memory that has occurred due to the many administrative and staff departures has created a vacuum of predictability as all the new players settle into their roles and learn building cultures. This lack of predictability will eventually be resolved, but in the meantime, it has resulted in disorder, much more disorder than in the past. A few of our students, a few, doesn't take many, just a few, have used this opportunity to challenge and try to extend or even erase old limits. Even students not causing the problems are confused about what our real expectations are for behavior, and more importantly, what the real consequences are for misbehavior, creating fear and uncertainty. This has led to the perception that the maintenance of order in our schools has been lost. Despite issues of violence in our larger community, our schools have long been a refuge of safety for those involved in that violence. But with previously trusted adults no longer present, that community violence apparently is attempting to gain a small foothold in our buildings. Board members and the public have been given statistics to show similar numbers of suspensions assigned to misdeeds that violate our longstanding and unchanged code of conduct. But let's be fully transparent, the misbehavior leading to the consequences is more serious than in the past. I have full confidence that this onslaught of negative behaviors, albeit by just a tiny, tiny portion of our student body, will be erased when our new staff is fully able to implement, as they state, the proper blending of our unchanged code of conduct with the new systems of behavior management. To be fully effective, the district needs the time for appropriate informing and implementation of this system. Despite the current community narrative, the district's high expectations of each student's behavior has not changed and will not change. Restoration of order is happening quickly, with significant progress made daily by some very hard-working and extremely capable staff. I have no doubt that our schools will quickly again become sanctuaries of safety and centers of amazing education. That small foothold of community violence trying to enter our schools will be turned away. My issue is that with proper planning and rollout of this initiative, the pain of the past few weeks and months and the serious damage to the district's reputation could have been minimized or even completely avoided. The substantial time and energy expended to restore the district back to our baseline of acceptable behavior could have been better utilized to advance the cause of restorative justice, to advance all aspects of our school improvement plans, to build upon our reputation of academic excellence. The board's concerns with how this change has unfolded is not ours alone. Those concerns are shared by many staff and certainly by many in our community. The volume of input at our meetings via written communications, conversations at school events, at workplaces, at houses of worship on Sabbath mornings indicates that this has been about as far from a smooth transition as you can get. I have outlined three major areas of concern. Both the school and general communities have expressed even more, leaving confusion, fear, uncertainty, and anger in its wake. Trust in our school system has been diminished. Respect for leaders, including school board members, this one too, has eroded. With proper rollout and proper use, the new system has the potential to transform the district into a model of good behavior. I hope that we can soon get back to talking about the strong academics, the achievements of each student, the paths our educators open to allow each and every student to achieve personal greatness. In the next few weeks, once order and equilibrium have been restored in our schools, and I said weeks, not months, but once that order is restored in our schools, of which the new leadership has already made substantial progress, we can move from this crisis mentality to ensuring that all aspects of operating an outstanding school system receive proper attention. But we also need to reflect on this situation and how and why we got here, and how, in a collaborative and collegial manner, we prevent this from happening again. This begins with district management joining the board and admitting that procedural mistakes were made, were made, that some judgments were faulty, that opposing viewpoints raised valid concerns that demanded a different process. It continues with work to reestablish teamwork in a diverse environment where all viewpoints are welcomed, respected, and included. I hope with this, we can reestablish trust, respect, and confidence. I and every other board member at this table are all 100% committed to preserve and build upon the academic excellence of District 116, to champion our core principle that every student is a valuable individual and every student can achieve their personal greatness. This board continues to be fully invested in the success of this school system, to build up and increase the excellence of all aspects of the system, while continuing our history of openness to try something new. While we currently are experiencing some very troublesome consequences of our own making and admittedly deep in the midst of damage control, I feel very confident that within a very short time, we will once again be on an upward and positive trajectory. Thanks for listening. We will have an exec meeting after the session tonight for purposes of discussing personnel. We need an approval of the agenda, please.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. Commendations and recognitions, Carrie.
It's not Carrie, it's actually us.
Okay.
If we could have Carrie Perkins, please come up. Yes, right here. I'm actually going to let Carol do the presentation because Carol has worked most closely with Carrie. Carrie Perkins has been our Director of Food Service at Airmark for nine and a half?
Five.
Five and a half, five and a half years. And in that short time, we have seen a major transformation of our major kitchens, our serving, and our menus. And we have not only done that, but we have also moved to a community eligibility program where no student in Urbana schools pays for breakfast or lunch. We've increased participation by numbers greatly exceeding our estimates to maintain community eligibility, have saved families in this community thousands and thousands of dollars in food costs. Carrie has been working almost the entire time she's been here on advanced degrees, and we knew that she was valuable not just to us but to Airmark when Airmark started not only making her Director of our food service, but also of neighboring school districts' food services and expanding her role. At this time, Carrie is leaving Airmark and taking a new role at the Illinois State Board of Education, which we are actually very glad and happy to have her there because it's nice to know a friendly face at ISBE. But Carrie, we would like you to accept the bouquet of flowers that Carol's presenting you with as a small token of our appreciation and gratitude for what you've done for Urbana Schools. Thank you.
Wonderful job, Don, thank you. I didn't prepare anything, but again, having worked closely with Carrie, you all know what a wonderful job she's done, and she's really turned our district around, and we're going to miss her terribly, but she's still going to be around, so she's not going far, and she's going to be our auditor now, so she's going to be nice to us. So, we will see her again, and she's here until the 12th, so please, if you don't get a chance to talk to her tonight, stop by the middle school and say goodbye to her before she goes, because she'll be greatly missed.
Thank you.
All right, we're ready for administrative briefings and report.
So first up, is a first read of Cunningham Children's Home agreement with Urbana School District. It's a shared use agreement. It is a renewal of an agreement that the board discussed about a year ago. There are some slight changes to this, and Todd, I don't know if you want to highlight some of those changes.
So, just to refresh the board's memory, we actually, our first shared use agreement was back in 2015, so this is three years down the road. We did a three, we did a one-year agreement with two one-year extensions as part of the agreement, and this is for the use of the facilities for our students who live at Cunningham Children's Home. Even though 2015 was our first formal shared use agreement, we have decades-long partnership with Cunningham on the education of students. That arrangement, in the last three years, has worked very well for us. We work well together, haven't experienced any significant difficulties. So here we are in 2018, three years later, so it is time for a new shared use agreement with Cunningham. I would say overall, it's very similar in scope to the 2015 agreements. If you looked at it, the language is very similar with one very significant difference. This agreement recognizes that Gerber School will be transitioning to the new Education and Rec Center this year, in December into January 2018 and 2019, so halfway through the school year, our Gerber program will be transitioning to a brand-new facility. I think all of our staff that work there are very excited and happy about that. So that is the one real difference between the two agreements, is that we have a partial year agreement this year for the current facilities, and then part of the agreement reflects that we will be in the new facility after winter break there. So I'm happy to entertain any questions about it. If you want to read it, we're not asking for a decision tonight. We'll bring it back in two weeks, hopefully for a vote.
Board members, any questions? It's basically a continuation, but in the new facilities.
Yes, exactly.
Any questions, board members?
He answered my questions.
It looked like he wanted to say something.
No.
No, he answered my questions, thank you. What's different about the last time, so, thank you, Todd.
All right, thank you, Todd. Next is our first read of a contract with Studio GC.
Yes, so the board has in front of them a copy of our Architectural Services proposal from Studio GC. If you remember, last spring, Studio GC was the company that was chosen, selected by the board to do a comprehensive site, campus land use and site plan design for the Urbana High School, Urbana Middle School campus, specifically what we've been referring to as the block north, that is, everything north of Iowa Street, if Iowa Street ran the entire way through the campus. And with us tonight is an Urbana High School graduate and Associate Principal of Studio GC, Cory Boaz, who might be able to answer any questions. Would you wave, Cory, just so that people could see? For the viewing audience and for the audience here, this project has three major phases, and the first phase is feasibility study, includes a survey of existing conditions and consolidation. There's also a Phase Two, which is a preliminary schematic design, which will be quite a bit of community, public input, and feedback from focus groups at both buildings, as well as the Board of Education. And that will also provide a great deal of traffic information. If you remember, when we had our Facilities Planning Committee two years ago, one of the major issues that came up when we were talking about the high school especially was issues of safety and traffic flow and wayfinding. And so that's a major piece of that second phase. And then the third phase is a consolidated schematic plan, which will be essentially, the final product, will be a presentation to the board of three different schemes or plans that are provided within Phase Two. So, and the final product will be a choice of three different designs that the board can then choose to act on as funds become available and as needs arise. And so, we're very much looking forward to this work because it will help us set a course out using our facilities, the facilities plan that the board approved a little over a year ago, along with our strategic plan, to really help us take a look at best use of the property that is currently kind of in transition, north of Iowa Street, between Iowa and Washington and Race and what is essentially Broadway, stretching it all the way over to Vine. The total compensation for the project is $74,000. There are a number of additional services that we have had discussions with Studio GC about, and we have discussed the fact that some of these we could do on our own, some of them it makes more sense to do with Studio GC, and some of them it might make sense waiting until we're closer to actually starting work. And so those are listed point by point through there, and I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Abatessa, Ms. Baker, or Mr. Boaz. Happy to answer any questions that the board has. This is a first read, and we would like to have this back for action in two weeks.
Any questions?
I have just two kind of specific questions. One is, the scope of Architectural Services refers to one onsite focus group, you know, under Phase Three, and yet the draft timeline, if that's what you call it, you talked about four focus meetings. So is that, okay, so that's one kind of very specific question, but...
I'll ask Cory to come up to the microphone.
Cory.
Thank you, Cory.
Yes, in Phase Three, sorry, in Phase Two...
Go ahead and sit down, Cory.
Just because you'll be on the microphone then.
The mic won't pick you up if you don't.
Thank you.
My apologies. Yes, in the draft outline, and for the conversation, does list out four focus group sessions. In Phase One, there's actually our three initial focus group sessions.
Oh, okay.
And then there's summative in Phase Two, which kind of, at that point, will present our three preliminary schemes as a final, this is our findings, these are what we are proposing.
Okay.
And then for final session to solicit input from the community.
Okay.
So yes, there are at least four.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. And then the other question is more general one. I mean, there's a great deal of detail provided on how, you know, our plan will address traffic flow and some of the safety issues that are a concern to all of us. But I know we also talked about in our, in the facility planning discussion, about the importance of using that space for outdoor learning environments, and I know in your presentation to us, you talked about that as well.
Yes.
But I just don't see that really touched upon a whole lot in this draft, which, so I just want assurance that, you know, attention to how that space can be used for outdoor learning environments is very much part of this contract, this, these three that are coming up.
Yes, I can assure you, the focus on outdoor learning spaces is included.
Okay.
That will be part of the focus group sessions, getting input from, we present several options, but if the community is not reticent to using those, we would obviously propose some other options that have worked at neighboring districts or in other districts in the past as well. So, yes, those will be part of the schemes.
Well, good, thank you, because I know I was very impressed with some of the ideas, just general ideas you had when you presented to us, after, you know, just looking very, you know, cursily at our space. at our space. You had some really good ideas and I look forward to fleshing some of those out with the input of our community.
Oh, sure.
Great. Thank you.
And in our meetings, we also, we not only shared the kind of final documents from the facilities planning, but we also discussed quite a bit, some of the discussions and the background information that went into that.
Oh, good.
And I would say outdoor learning spaces was second only to traffic and drop-off pickup.
Great. Great. Thank you.
Other board members' questions? Cory, you're going to concentrate on the north, but you're going to go from Michigan Avenue all the way to Washi, I mean, it's, you're going to look at everything.
That's correct.
I just want to make sure that we have that, that we know that the entire campus from street to street to street to street is being looked at.
That is correct.
All right. Thank you. Anything else from the board? This will be before us in two weeks for a vote of approval.
Yeah, and I would just say if board has any questions in the next two weeks, please email them to me and I will pass them along to Cory and my team.
Point of privilege, an old friend, your dad is sitting back there. Hi, Tom. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. We have no action items this evening. We have study topics, which is the UMS and UHS Continuous Improvement and Discipline Updates. Are we doing each school?
We're doing, we're doing the high school first and then middle school.
Okay, one at a time.
And so I'll ask Dolores Brown and her team to come up.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for setting aside time for us to get a chance to address the board and give an overview, not only of our school improvement plan...
Let's give your team a chance to get up here. Surely you're not going to face this by yourself.
No worries, no worries.
You can pull the chairs forward, guys, so you're part of the team. Thank you.
You're going to be my clicker. But to give an opportunity to definitely clarify some misconceptions and to really give a accurate depiction of what's going on, not only at the high school, but also Dr. Weemeld and the middle school. So thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it. Thank you for those who came out to the PEP Assembly and to the homecoming parade. It was definitely a memorable opportunity for me, my first homecoming event in homecoming week. So thank you to the community, to the board, to the district leaders for just coming out and showing the support. During homecoming week, we had just an exciting time during the PEP Assembly. It was really one of the most well-behaved assemblies that, again, from previous assemblies, according to our staff and members of our team. So thank you, community members. Again, I really appreciate it. But we will be looking at, go ahead, our agenda, we will be looking at some school demographics, an overview of our administrative and support staff. We will also look at our multi-tiered system of supports, our current status and modifications, our future plans, and our requests to the board. So our plan this year really is around the increase of student academic achievement with an explicit focus on racial equity, especially for our marginalized students, while still decreasing the over-representation of students of color in exclusionary discipline practices using a multi-tiered system of support framework and restorative practices to create an environment of culturally responsive teaching through a partnership with student, staff, and families. So this year, we are tackling, looking at those processes that, again, create systematic inequalities, but also providing that professional development and time to allow our teachers and students to understand the changes through the approach of MTSS, our Multi-Tiered System of Support, utilizing restorative practices within each tier, a blend of our traditional discipline practices, and again, some innovative and creative ways to approach supports for our students on an individualized basis. So our demographics, we are above our enrollment in previous years. This year, we're at 12, we're at 1262. That's almost 100-plus more students than last year, and I know certain classes definitely feel that influx of students, especially in our English and math classes, our Comp 9 classes, which are double-blocked, especially are overcrowded and definitely in comparison to our AP prep classes, you can see a very obvious discrepancy in those class sizes, which is something that we're going to be tackling as well within our school improvement plan. Nonetheless, we have 62% low-income, 15% of students with disabilities, we have 8% of students who are English learners. We definitely have seen an increase in our ESL population. Our ESL classrooms are busting at the seams and we're just reaching almost 30 students in our English newcomer class. Our ethnicity breakdown, 37% African-American, 2% American Indian, Alaska native, 4% Asian, 12% Hispanic, and 38% Caucasian. So again, obvious influx within our student enrollment, who, which has played a part in some of our factors this year as well. I wanted to just go very quickly over the administrative support team, I'm sorry, the administrative team and support staff. As you can see, we have really created team-based, grade-level teams based on an administrator, a student interventionist, a student engagement advocate, and also a grade-level counselor. These additional supports have helped with our influx in enrollment, but also the ability to really provide that support for our students. We do have two clinical professionals who have, again, helped with our, not only Tier One, universal, all-students support, but also helped with some targeted group supports for Tier Two and also Tier Three, which is our individualized student support. And we're going to go into specifics, what those Tier Two supports are in just a second. Before we get into some data, I definitely want to take some time to address just an overview of the multi-tiered system of support. This is not a framework that I brought with me, but this is a framework that many districts and schools are using throughout, not only the state, but throughout the country. Illinois has a RTI MTSS network that coaches and helps districts and schools, schools really implement evidence-based interventions and help, again, articulate that vision for students, staff, and community members, and parents, as well. So this system, again, is not a framework that is new to education within the Illinois School Personnel Grant that allowed this network to come into fruition. You have nine participating universities as well that are teaching future teachers' response to intervention, RTI, or multi-tiered systems of support. Back in 2011, you have the State of Illinois who put money aside to help schools and districts really outline this RTI response to intervention process. So it is not a new framework, but it's definitely a approach to, a systematic evidence-based approach to ensure that we give students what they need at their specific levels. So MTSS is, it changes the way schools approach and support students and behaviors, the social and emotional learning, and the academic problems that not only Urbana, but schools throughout the nation are facing right now. It is a systematic approach, delivering a range of specifically research-based interventions, supports based on demonstrated levels of need. So it is, again, very individualized, it's for students, it's based on students' needs and some of the interventions will be different for certain students, again, based on the repetitive behaviors, based on the background, and based, again, on those individual factors. But throughout this process, we will blend not only those research-based interventions coupled with restorative practices, but we also are utilizing those [inaudible] methods of discipline. So again, just digging a little bit deeper in elements of MTSS, again, that multi-tiered system of support, school-wide approach to student support. You have teachers, counselors, student interventionists, clinical professionals, our psychologists, our social workers are involved in this work. Many of our support staff has already, again, began to target specific behaviors based on the documentation provided from teachers, provided from the administrative staff and our student interventionists, in order for us to implement evidence-based and research-based interventions. Again, those strategies are key and, again, tied to that research base. We frequently monitor students' progress, so again, educators can use the data. The data is key. It drives our decision-making. Data is key in this process. And family involvement is also key within this process, so parents can understand the interventions and provide support at home. Later on in my presentation, I definitely will look at some of those implementation of our action steps and action plans, and one of those action plans definitely involved in that communication, not only with staff, but with our parents as well. We're going to create those small sessions, small group sessions for parents, so we can clearly articulate, clearly answer specific questions in regards to the changes within our MTSS approach. So we will, again, have a plan in place and ready to make sure that we can articulate and streamline some of the information that we still need to, to all of our stakeholders. So this is just, I'm a visual learner, so I like to always give a visual document. This is, again, a visual of our multi-tiered system of support. Tier One involves all students. That's the universal level. That's the, those classroom supports, that's that target, that behavior, again, I'm sorry, that's the interventions that all of our students receive. Speaking at grade-level assemblies, all students heard that information. That's Tier One. Making sure that we visit classrooms and teachers within the classrooms, give specific and consistent expectations. Again, that's what all students receive. As we move up in the tier, the intensity of our interventions increase. So that Tier Two is now, again, targeted groups based on specific behaviors that has already been displayed and documented, and again, making sure that that parent contact is fluid throughout the tiers. So the time and intensity increases as we move up the tiers. And lastly, Tier Three looks at specific individualized students. That's a small number of students who now receive individualized supports. And again, later in my slides, you will see some of those Tier Three and Tier Two interventions, those small group settings based on specific targeted behavior. One group that we're starting is for profanity and inappropriate language. We're seeing an influx of that and has already targeted some students to receive that small group training. Right. Give me this one. Okay, no worries, no worries. So again, just want to outline some of those tier interventions for Tier One, that is all students, all students receive. We want to develop the social and emotional capacity of our students within the classroom. Many teachers within our building, they are circle keepers. They've been trained in conducting restorative circles in the classroom. Aside from admin, aside from student interventionists, they take the initiative to build that capacity within their specific classrooms. Many of our students have received those, that training, also regarding circles, restorative circles, for years. I know one student specifically during my interview process who talked about restorative practices and she's been doing it since she was in middle school and is now a junior. So this is not a new concept for this district, not a new concept for this building, but it's a blend now of some of those traditional approaches coupled with, again, those, that restorative piece, because it is important that we restore the harm and the hurt caused by students' misbehavior and ensure that everybody's voice is heard and that feelings are expressed so we can move on in a more productive way to ensure the success of our students. So we establish communication with students and families in targeted groups, assist students' families to improve students' progress, and collaborate, monitor, or make referrals to programs and support. We advocate for equity of all students, provide large group instruction to help students and staff successfully participate in restorative practices and dialogue. And again, parent involvement is key, even at this universal level. Parent contact and behavior documentation, we have a new, not new, but we have a format that teachers can utilize within Skyward of making those behavior documentations within Skyward itself. So that is monitored by the administrative team as well. So some of our Tier Two and Tier Three topics of our small groups and individualized supports and interventions, they include de-escalation strategies, not only for our students, but we've also, will be giving and continue to give ongoing professional development for de-escalation strategies for our teachers as well. We have to model that emotional intelligence that we're trying to teach our own students. We have to model what it looks like for self-regulation and emotional regulation as adults. So modeling that, we have to make sure that we provide that professional development as well for our staff. Self-regulation, some of our students are just angry and reacting without thinking about the consequences. Research shows us that some students or some humans, individuals, don't really understand the consequences for their actions and it's a brain developmental aspect, that doesn't fully develop until you're 22, for women, of course, and then 26 for men, no worries. But again, that's just, that's just an example of that. We have to slow down and give this, these, our students tools to be successful, not only academically, behaviorally, and definitely socially and emotionally. Again, practicing that emotional intelligence. Yes, content is important. Yes, we want to make sure they're critical thinkers, but we also have to make sure that they can handle pressure and challenges and how to respond to that pressure and those challenges. We're also making sure students are making the right choices. Sometimes they don't think about those choices. So again, we are trying to push against some of that developmental aspects of brain research, but also we have to teach them, again, specific skills to be successful. Those social skills, those study skills, crisis intervention, our social worker and clinical professionals, they do an outstanding job in making sure they respond to students who's, who are in crisis and making sure we take the appropriate steps. Mrs. Trezis, I saw her earlier, was here till 6 o'clock on yesterday, making sure that students are safe and secure in this building and taking the time to ensure that, not pushing it off on someone else. So thank you, Mrs. Trezis, for being an example and being a leader and, you know, being committed to the work at hand. In addition, we are doing push-in tutoring, again, that's social and emotional support, even at the Tier Two and Tier Three levels. That's individual and specific targeted groups coupled with always proactive circles, responsive circles, restorative meetings and conferences, that's more Tier Three. Check-in and check-out, planned mediation, again, and this is the most crucial, focus on relationships. And I left it as being last because it is important throughout the tiers that we develop trusting relationships, not only with our staff, with our students, and with our parents. And sometimes that does take some time. We're rolling on the second month of school right now and some of us have to break some old habits within this new system. And we know that sometimes habits are hard to break. Sometimes it takes months to break a habit. So giving us the time and the tools to ensure that teachers receive the training, ongoing professional development to meet the goals of this building and also meet the goals of our students. That's what I was looking for. And this is just, again, I'm a visual learner. This is just a diagram that shows, again, those restorative practices at each tier. Tier One, that universal level, Tier Two, targeted groups, and Tier Three, again, that individualized support. So again, what are we doing currently? Tier One, that, yes, with the list that I showed previously, but also more specifically, that Tier One is social and emotional learning. We're seeing an influx of students who, again, need to regulate their social emotions. We have to ensure that we're adding that support for all students. Tier Two groupings, based on gender and behavior-specific groupings, making sure our young ladies understand self-esteem and self-awareness and making sure that they receive the appropriate tools, not only for our young women, but for our young men as well. So providing that support that's not only gender-specific, but also beha- and making sure that they receive the appropriate tools. Not only for our young women, but for our young men as well. So providing that support that's not only gender-specific, but also behavior-specific groupings. Tier three groupings include individualized behavior support. Those wraparound student support services provided by our clinical professionals, our social workers, student engagement advocates, and of course, administration. And again, those, it's always going to be blended with the restorative practice throughout the tiers. And I just had to add to make sure that UHS is abiding by the code of conduct. Students receive consequences blended with the evidence-based interventions. And this is just a data breakdown. Again, our enrollment is definitely higher than in 2017. We have an increase of 159 students. Fights and physical aggression, they are up from last year. 2007, we had eight. 2018, we've had 13. But there's also some discrepancies in coding from last year. And some of those incidents wasn't coded the same way that it has been coded this year. So I definitely want to add that. Suspensions, and these are students, it was 15 in 2017 at this time of, point in the year. This year, we have 18. Suspension days, we are definitely significantly higher. 12.5 last year, and this year, we're at 48. And overall referrals, last year at 127, this year, we're at 88. But what we also, teachers have definitely taken advantage of and make sure that they document along the way. All teachers are utilizing the Skyward notes section to ensure that that documentation piece is evident throughout the tiers. So just in case you couldn't read the chart, want to give you some bullet points as well. The same information in restorative, our restorative U-room, which is specifically the old DRA room, our in-school suspension. This year, we have 42 students assigned for 154 periods. Last year, there were 74 students assigned for 336 periods. So this year, yes, we did have some increase in suspensions, but our goal is to keep students here in the building and making sure that they get the academic supports they need. At the same time, the social and emotional and the behavior supports that's necessary as well. We are educating the whole child. And this is my favorite part, the academic update. I'm a big proponent, as the instructional leader, we have to ensure that all parts of our multi-tiered system of support is in place. And academically, we are not there yet. Yes, we have an ACT proficiency of 60, I'm sorry, 29%. 84.4% of freshmen on track. But within the MTSS framework, we need to have a universal screener. And not just a universal screener for high school, but throughout secondary. A universal screener allows us to really look at specific deficits and opportunities for enrichment for all of our students. What exactly are their deficit areas? Is it math, number sense? Is it algebraic expressions? Is it reading fluency? What is it? And right now, we don't have a tool to progress monitor. We have inconsistent implementation of formative and summative assessments. If students don't have the background knowledge that coming into the school, they get lost within the world of high school. So what are we going to do to ensure that, again, the academic supports are there? Because right now, we've only been focusing on discipline. And that's one-third of the battle. The academic supports are necessary. We definitely have, I have a vision of how we can carry out some of the academic tiered intervention. Making sure that, again, across six through 12, that we are utilizing a universal screener. That could be measures of academic progress. It can be any tool that we can agree upon, but will give us a diagnostic indication of where students are academically. Utilizing that within the middle school as well will allow our incoming ninth graders to really receive those tiered interventions. Those students who need specific reading or math interventions will be able to get that first quarter as soon as they come in. If we need to double-block them in Comp 9 or making sure that we utilize those blocks in a way that is effective for students and also making sure that we provide the enrichment opportunities for our students who need it as well. With the Acceleration Act and competency-based education, we just have so much opportunity to be innovative and to really give students what they need and the acceleration that they need. And also, on the other side of continuum, making sure that students receive interventions for their specific deficits. So our action plan in areas of improvement. We still need to clearly and continue to work with our staff in not only modifying, but really articulating and clarifying the procedures for classroom and office behavior management. We need to continue to provide that ongoing support for teachers, answer questions and talk about, and get their input in ways that we can, again, continuously adapt our plan. We've been adapting, and we want teacher's input as we continue to adapt and make sure, excuse me, we're doing what's best for our children. SRS supervision and that professional development that's necessary for our SRSs to provide effective supervision. We'll be looking at redistributing some of our SRSs throughout the building, looking at those specific areas that our high flyers are roaming to and those areas that are least supervised. We definitely have to, again, adjust and make sure that we are utilizing our personnel effectively. Administrative response system. As administrators, we have to be instructional leaders and making sure that our time is allocated in a way to ensure that we're still those instructional leaders. So the administrative support, I guess, response system is really having two administrators on call and freeing up some space and some time so we can, again, be that instructional leader for our content areas and for our staff. Staffing and training, again, that's ongoing PD. On our last half-day, September 21st, we definitely looked at specific PD for teachers. One for academic, another for social and emotional, and the other was for behaviors. So Mr. Elvire presented to our staff on restorative practices and classroom management. We had Karen Samms come and present on trauma-informed teaching and culturally-responsive teaching. And then we had our instructional coaches present on student-centered engagement and those student-centered lessons. So our ongoing professional development is a continuum that's tied to our school improvement plan, to the work that we're doing, and ensuring that teachers and our students understand our multi-tiered system of support. Obviously, throughout this process, we want parent and community involvement. As I said before, our plan is to increase those opportunities for parents to come in to understand the changes and understand specifically our multi-tiered system of support. And coupled in all of that, we want to build relationships, not only with our students, not only with our staff members, but with our community. We all need to speak the same language and be able to articulate the processes that are in place. Again, semantics is key. And we all have to speak the same language and able to articulate, again, those changes, those processes, and really, the way is going to help our students. And that's why we're doing it, is for all students to be successful. It's to ensure that when students leave Urbana High School, that they can be productive members of society. They could be global citizens. They can be critical thinkers. They possess the skills to be lawyers and doctors and innovators and engineers. We want that for all of our students, not just a specific population. So again, this support is not just for one group, it's for all of our students. And again, we will provide the ongoing support, PD, to ensure that all of our stakeholders understand this process and our vision. So what do we want from you all, the board? We are requesting, if we possible, two to three additional student relation supervisors, as SRSs, to be consistent, to provide that consistent supervision that's necessary to ensure safety and security of our students and staff members. We would like a certified teacher in the restorative U-room, which is our in-school suspension, to provide that, I'm sorry, continuum of academic supports even during the consequence, even during the restorative U-room. Establish guidelines and parameters for teacher hallway duty expectations. We do have teachers who have hallway duty throughout the day. And making sure that we, again, set those parameters and really provide that effective supervision that's necessary to ensure the security and safety of all of our stakeholders. And again, as I mentioned before, that academic universal screeners. And this slide, it just outlines some of the steps that we've already taken. I mentioned most of it, our professional development that took place last month. Making sure that every month, we provide check-ins and question-and-answer sessions and opportunities for the staff members to really, again, understand the multi-tiered system of support. Again, this is not a new framework, but what we should be doing for students. And making sure all of our stakeholders understand this is key. Team, did I mean, listen, any questions for us?
Any questions for Dolores?
I don't have a question. I just want to say, this brings tears to my eyes because you're sharing this as though this was put together with compassion too. And if the kids can see this, things can be done with these kids. If you practice this and use this, then we will see some success. So I'm praying and I'm hoping that, we're not going to get 100%, but at least this is the beginning. So I think to tell you and your team, great job. Thank you so very much.
And, you know, research shows that to really, for an initiative that's transformational of nature and something like this, you know, in the first year is going to be shaky. There are going to be some, you know, uncomfortability within all of our stakeholders. But to see the lasting results, it may be year two. And to give us that time to put in the work, because the old system was here for, what, for over a decade. So uprooting, again, those habits, it does take time. And we're asking for the time to do the work that we're all committed and doing. Those same values that we've heard from parents, from you all, from the board, from district leaders, we hold those values true to ourselves as well. We want our schools to be safe and secure. We want our students to be social and emotionally competent. We want them to be academically successful. And we want them to behave appropriately and have that intrinsic motivation to ensure that, again, they reach their personal greatness. It's going to take a little time and a little work. So I thank you for the opportunity and thank you for giving us a chance to present our work and what we have and will continue to work on and be committed to.
More questions? Yeah, could I? Thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to follow up on your requests, your four requests. The first was the two to three additional student relation supervisors for consistent supervision. Is there any way that, you know, when Mr. Dowd talked about the parent Facebook group organizing to provide parent volunteers for hallway duty at UMS, and they were reaching out to UHS soon to do the same? Would that be, is that an area where parent volunteers could be useful? I realize these other areas, they wouldn't. Because there are certified teachers needed and so on.
Of course, we would love parents to be involved, to be in the hallways. You know, maybe if a student sees their parent, they'll make sure they behave appropriately. But no, that parent involvement is key, and we would love parents to come in. There will be some training, not only for our SRSs, but parents in understanding that effective supervision and what we need to ensure the safety of our staff and students.
Because that might be a short-term need while we wait. Budget's not always what we'd like it to be, of course, you know. And the other one was when you talked about establishing guidelines and parameters for teacher hallway duty expectations. I mean, is that, I guess I would assume that's something that you would do in-house, that it wouldn't come from us, but maybe, am I wrong about that? Are you thinking it's the other way?
I just want to make sure that that was something that we'll be looking at and asking for the board and district leadership's support and making sure that we outline some of the changes. Again, we're changing a culture that has been implemented within that building for a number of years. So it will be a shift to, from what is accustomed, what teachers are accustomed to.
Okay, fine. And just the last one, I just want to, more of a comment, well, a question too. I appreciate what you had to say because you said throughout the importance of building relationships and achieving almost every goal you had up there was the importance of relationships. And, you know, I couldn't agree more. I have to say, I think when I talk to parents and students and staff in recent weeks, much of the uncertainty and anxiety that I hear, to me, kind of gets at, has to do with the many new relationships that are being formed because there are so many new people at the high school right now. And I think that anxiety is just felt because, you know, there's so much uncertainty there. And of course, relationship building just takes time, but it can be facilitated and hastened too. So I guess, my question is, do you have some procedures or activities or direction that you see taking to really help facilitate relationships with students and parents and staff? I mean, are there some things that you're wanting to explore to help push that along?
Excellent. I'm happy you brought that up. On yesterday, our faculty meeting, we had a staff cookout. We focused on community building. We had a community building activity where, you know, we're not going through what we need to figure out and what's not working, but let's take some time, let's sit back, let's eat some hamburgers and hot dogs, and then let's get to know one another. So we really spent time just formulating and really building that relationship and building the trust. Because not only is there new administrators, but there are also over 15 new teachers within the building. So it's not only understanding and building a relationship with administrative staff, but also with the other teachers within the building as well. Oh, yes, and I believe Mr. Elvire is going to head the social, no, no. We will create, one thing that is on our task is creating a social committee. And we're all going to be heading that. A social committee so we can make sure that we implement monthly social events for our staff. I did that indicator, going bowling, going to the movies together. Just social events to get to know each other outside of the four walls of that building, outside of our positions and prestige, lack thereof. But making sure that we make sure that we forge and build those relationships even outside of the building.
Great. Thank you.
And with students, I didn't forget students. I'm planning on, you know, I was a three-sport athlete. I'm planning on having open gym for students every month where we will just play a variety of sports. Again, get to know me on another level, a different level, and see me outside of just my suit jackets and my office, but see me as a human as well.
Well, thank you. Thank you. And I will conclude, this is very short, but I, this is relevant for you and also for the UHS staff who are coming up. But kind of following up on John's statement early on, I want to thank you, John, for representing my view. But also, I want to underscore something you touched on, but I think warrants special mention, and that is, you know, how much we greatly appreciate the efforts of our new and our returning staff and building administrators this year. It's clear you're all working very hard to create effective learning environments for our students. And I especially value your commitment at this time, at this challenging time in our school. So thank you to commitment to our school district. So UHS, UMS, and those who are not here in our elementary schools. Thank you.
And we are committed.
Thank you.
Paul?
Very much appreciate the fact that you came here with specific ask for the board and how we can assist and support your mission. What, do they come with specific timeframes? I mean, some of them, I know we could probably do pretty quickly, but other ones are going to take more time. So I was wondering if you could kind of highlight which ones and what timeframes.
As quickly as possible. I would like all of it. As quickly as possible. We need, right, we needed it last week, yesterday. So definitely the supervision requests, the SRSs, the universal screeners, that is immediate because we have to ensure, again, that we're not only supporting students behaviorally and discipline, but, and the social-emotional piece, but academically. There's an urgency that we make sure that we create those monitoring tools, that we utilize that screener, not only at the high school, but secondary, so we can increase our freshman on track. So we can increase, have a consistent transitional program and even creation of a freshman academy eventually.
I have a few questions, and I'm going to try and remember to repeat these for the UMS presentation to follow. When I was looking at the data overview, I know that the number- When I was looking at the, the data overview, I know that the numbers are up a little bit in certain areas for this year, and you'd mentioned that's coding issues. So how are we going to address being able to analyze the data from year to year with those coding issues? I mean, fights and physical aggressions, we've talked about this before, that's defined differently by different people. And with overall referrals, it's, the number is down, but does that include the increase in the fights, the aggressions, the suspensions? So I'm, I'm trying to get my head around how we analyze this to truly know whether we're succeeding this year or not, especially if the coding is different. And also with Skyward reporting, I don't know if it's, if it's the same across both schools, that only certain amount of, certain individuals are allowed to put referrals into Skyward. And you can, if I'm wrong here, please tell me, but I was, I thought that there were, that all staff was allowed to put infractions, referrals, whatever, into Skyward last year, but that, that number is down because it's being reported to different staff members, and it's only a small group of staff members who are allowed to report behavior incidents into Skyward. And if I'm wrong, please correct me.
That's the first time I've ever heard.
Okay.
I can only speak for the high school. At the high school, nothing has changed as far as who can put in referrals. You can go into Skyward, teachers can still write a referral whenever they want. We have not changed that process. We have not taught anybody not to write referrals. What we have added was, is the notes piece to Skyward where we want documented evidence that other interventions have been tried prior to just going to a student referral. So in the notes section for each student, you can go and check. So that doesn't stop them from doing a referral. What happens is the referral will go in, we look at the referral, and then we check the notes to see if there's other interventions that have been tried. If those interventions haven't been tried, then we try to go back and have a conversation with the teacher as to why. Because sometimes it's an emergency. A fight broke out, you, you're not even going to try any other interventions. So that's the only difference that's changed at the high school as far as referrals. Anybody and everybody who has Skyward or that student can write a referral. So that has not changed. And as far as the baseline data, at the high school, we've added the Swiss program that's coming online. So this will be a baseline year for our data. And we are trying to communicate as well with the secondary at the middle school to make sure that we're coding everything the same. A fight being a fight, you know, two students make contact, that's a fight. Physical altercations, you know, if one student, I don't even know how people explain that because that's a fight to me. So I don't, we don't use that at the high school, but we do verbal altercations, and then there's an assault and battery if somebody's in attack. So those are the only differences that we use at the high school. Now, we do have to have a lot more communication with the middle school so that we're all on the same page because, you know, we're, we're comparing that data from eighth grade to ninth grade, you know, it can be a little bit skewed in the way the data was being tracked before. But this, this year will be a baseline year for us with the Swiss because that's very specific as to what you put in and the information that you get out from there. And also with the Skyward as well.
So I'm glad you brought that up because I, I went to the parent advisory committee meeting that you helped co-chair a few weeks back that mentioned Swiss. So I know maybe there are some people here who aren't familiar with that term. Could you explain the difference between Swiss and what was used previously?
So I, I'm not sure if it was, I know Swiss was being used in other buildings throughout the, throughout the district.
Elementary schools.
But at the high school, it wasn't being used. So Swiss is just a school-wide intervention, PBI's network, you know, and we put information in there and it's reported to the state, and it kind of captures everything. It gives you very specific data, when, when a referral's happening, what time of the day, what room, where, and it graphs it out for you and it tracks it for you. It tracks your IEP students. It just does a lot more very easily with clicks as opposed to Skyward. The, the, the very important part about Swiss is to have fidelity, fidelity into what's being entered into the system. So at the high school, we have a process where only one person will be entering the information into the system. Now, as administrators, we can go in and make a disposition as to what happened to that referral, but one person will be putting all the information in. So it's just one point of contact, and we know that it all goes in. So we don't have everybody putting stuff in or somebody not putting stuff in. So that's the way we're going to try to, you know, do our Swiss program at the high school.
And so is that, I'm sorry to interrupt you. So that, with the hope that if we're using that in elementary schools and we're continuing it through the upper-level education, we can track individual students to see that they're getting what they need at the earliest possible age so that by the time they're in high school, you can look back over their entire academic record and say, oh, this, this student's received the interventions. If it's a, you know, a student who's had some problems. I mean, I'm not saying it's, I'm not using it as a punitive measurement, I'm using it as a progress measurement. Is that what we can use it for? I mean, can we track and say, like, this, this kid really got a lot of services throughout all of, we're, we're being continuous with our services?
I think it shows the response that you do to certain behaviors or how you respond to whatever consequences. So like in Swiss, you could go in and put in, you did a restorative circle or restorative chat, or you did this, you know, for this particular student. I think personally, more the way I like to use Swiss is more tracking, okay, you know, on Thursdays, our referrals are really high. Why are referrals really high on every Thursday? Or on Tuesday, or during passing periods, or in the hallway? Or this particular teacher writes a whole lot of referrals this day? Or this particular teacher doesn't write any referrals? So there's, there's a huge discrepancy there, you know, so you can have a lot of dialogue around the, the data. And we always want to use that data to, you know, drive our decisions. So I would use it more like that, not so much as tracking students from, from elementary to high school. I think that our MTSS process will track interventions and, and supports in a, in a much better way than Swiss would.
Okay, thank you. And then I still have some questions about the academic portion. I'm glad you talked about that because we want to help the students who need the extra services, but we also want the students who don't need as much services to still feel like they're getting a good education and they're not being ignored for being good. You know what I mean? I hate to say, I can't think of a better way to say that. But, so I'm really glad that you mentioned it, but it made me wonder, I mean, what have we been doing up until now for screening our students? I mean, what systems have we had in place to make sure that they, kids are tracked into the right classes and they're getting, so that they can by the time, you know, I don't want to see a freshman hit freshman year and just be on the same trajectory for all four years if that student has a capacity to grow and advance, you know, beyond what they were tracked at as freshmen. So I'm, I'm just curious to know what systems we've used in the past.
I'm not sure. I, I know some of the recommendations for our students who are in the pre, on, in the AP prep track may get those recommendations starting as early as sixth grade. So it's middle school. So again, making sure that we have that universal screener throughout secondary to ensure that we are making the appropriate recommendations for students who can be successful in certain areas and get the additional support they need early on and not waiting until progress reports or report cards when they already have a D and F. And again, we're not sure if it's deficit learning, we're not sure if it's a specific learning disability, we're not sure where it's at, and we're just pulling in the air for academic interventions.
And I think one of the systems that is currently being used, and I'm not sure because I'm not at the middle school, but I would imagine is NWA when they're taking their, their scores and, you know, placing them.
Speak closer to the mic.
As they're tracking their scores, as they're moving in from the middle school to the high school. But unfortunately, we do need that academic universal screener because we don't want to find out in the 11th grade that a student's failing when we already know they're going to be failing. We want to be proactive and attack that in eighth grade. If we know there's a, there's an educational achievement gap there, we can prepare better for them when they come into high school by providing, you know, enrichment or remedial, or whatever it is that needs to be done because we have that information upfront. So why are we going to wait for them to start failing before we provide the support and the interventions? We could do that on the front end instead of the back end. Because we're always trying to get students to, to graduate when we know they're already going to be there so we can provide those supports on the front end.
Okay. And my last, it's more of a comment and a request of my own. I do hope that with all of the training that's been happening with all of your staff, that substitutes are folded into this and encouraged to stay the course with our district because they have choices about where they can go. And I know we have a lot of really dedicated, consistent subs. We want to keep them in our district, and I want them to be as much a part of this conversation as all of the regular staff that we've got in our buildings. So that goes for both UMS and UHS.
And just want to say that we're planning a, a, really a substitute training session, Mr. Corson and the administrative team will be looking at training our subs on specific changes to our discipline process and multi-tiered system of support. So that's in the works for this month as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Others? Turn your mic on.
Very good presentation. Thank you ever so much. Well needed, right time, right place. But before you go, I want you to reiterate now, what is that brain maturity age thing again?
Karen Samms made a very good point when she presented to our staff on September 21st that some of the brain development and understanding consequences for our actions is not fully developed until, again, in, in our early twenties and sometimes, for some folks, is in their late twenties. So really expecting students to understand, fully, all students to understand the consequences for their actions is really going against some of the developmental frameworks that has, you know, and research, that we've got to give students time. We have to give each other time to adjust, especially our students, and making sure that developmentally, we understand where they are. And I think that's key.
I appreciate the, the report tonight as well. The, I'm going to, I'm going to go back to something, I said a lot tonight, so I don't need to say a lot more, but I just wish that, I, I've been concerned about the budget. We've added a lot of staff to the high school that isn't direct teaching staff in this year, and I'm, I just wish we had done a better job of planning so that we knew what the budget was going in as opposed to continuous add-ons of personnel. I'm not negating that you might need them, I'm just indicating that we are keenly aware of our budget issues. I am, I, I put that, this board member is keenly aware of our budget issues. And so I would encourage you to look for places where you can save money so we can spend money in these other priority areas that you have. And I had another comment. Oh, we don't have time tonight, but I need to know more about these academic universal screeners that you're talking about. Because I've never heard that term before in this district, and this is a district that usually prides itself on doing well, on matriculation from one place to the next, from one grade to the next. What I'm hearing, you need to know what I'm hearing so that you can help me understand better that I'm hearing wrong. But I'm hearing teaching to the test. When I, we've got a lot of staff in this district and administration that spend a lot of time telling us that there is no single way to measure success. And then when I hear universal screener, I'm hearing, oh, there is a way to measure universally for everybody. And so that flies against what I've heard from this district before. So as I said, we don't have time tonight, but I just need to be better educated on, on what you're talking about. And I'm sure it's my ignorance is, and my mis-hearing is, is what's causing my, my concern.
I would love to set up a meeting to sit down and we could discuss, no worries.
So I think it's going to take more than that. I need to read it.
Okay.
So, all right. Anything else then for this evening? I just, we will entertain your requests, but I'm just indicating that budget is an issue, and we went a long ways in adding a bunch of acronyms to the administrative structure of the high school that I don't yet fully understand. So SRS, SRA, all these other acronyms that are being used. So it's a lot more staff than what we're used to. Thank you, thank you so much.
And I would like to invite the board to come to UHS and see what's going on here and, and see for yourself. And again, we can sit down and discuss any of the elements within the presentation. Thank you again.
And I do want to reiterate also one thing that I said, which is you guys are working your butts off. This has been the month from hell, and I cannot thank you enough for, I know the, all the hours that you all are putting in to make this thing work. So I, it's really, really greatly appreciated.
We're committed to the work.
So, thank you.
As the middle school is coming up, sorry, I didn't mean to cut off applause here. I do want to, I, I want to address your question, John, about, about universal screeners because this district has actually used universal screeners for a long time, and maybe it's just the term. And it's something, when I say dibbles or...
That I understand.
Okay. Dibbles is a universal screener.
I got that.
And, and the very first time, when we first presented on RTI, it was 2008, and Susan Baker Ori and I did a presentation on response intervention, multi-tiered systems of support, and universal screeners.
That I recognize.
Yeah, and universal screeners at the elementary level. Universal screeners at the middle school level is something that we have been using for a number of years inconsistently. And I'll say inconsistently because the documentation on the effectiveness of universal screeners at the elementary level is not as, is not as solid as it is at the early levels because it is, it is designed to be an early intervention in reading. And so when we talk about universal screeners at the high school level, I would, I would completely agree with, with the presentation tonight. And that is a critical need in order to assess the, the actual skills that students have. It also is something that's being addressed in part through the work that the high school and middle school and district committees are doing on competency-based and acceleration. Because those require some kind of screening to determine skill sets. And so I just wanted, I, I wanted to make sure that you had the...
I just have never heard that term.
Yeah, the framework, right. The framework was, was where I wanted to make sure because act, universal academic screeners, I think, is probably like multi-tiered systems of support. I'm very familiar with it because of the research and reading that I do on a daily basis, but I appreciate you calling on it. I just wanted to put some frameworks around. When I say dibbles, you're like, oh, that's it. And so I wanted to pull that back.
Sure.
For you. And, and give you that framework. Up next is Dr. Weemelt and Urbana Middle School presentation to the board. So Joe, I'll let you take it away.
All right, very good. Good evening. Thank you for having me. I know it's getting late, so I will be succinct, but definitely will be open to questions and conversations as we go. I want to start and thank middle school staff that's here tonight in the crowd and middle school parents and middle, and folks that are concerned and with the middle school and hopeful for the middle school as well. I want to specifically thank lots of community members and, and parents that have reached out to me in very positive ways to lend a helping hand and provide support. Teachers that are lending hands and, and rolling up sleeves to, to, to move us forward in the right direction. All stakeholders that are, and, and stakeholders that are emailing with questions and concerns. Those are all valued and important pieces of this process. We said earlier in the Tiger Talk on Facebook Live that through this process, the past month in particular, but past several months, I've seen how much the community cares about education here in all ways, right? In multiple ways. And so that, as a parent of, of kids in the school district and living in Urbana and as professionally, it, it, I really appreciate that. So I just wanted to state that upfront. The agenda for tonight is a real quick data overview, reminder of our school, our main school improvement goal. We do have a separate academic goal. I don't have it presented tonight. I'm happy to come back and talk academics. I just focused on behavior and discipline in this presentation tonight. A little bit over, overview of our system of supports, discipline system, our current status and modifications we've already made, and modifications we need to make ASAP, and some of our longer-term goals, future plans. And then board requests, if possible. So the school improvement overarching goal is related to student well-being, student sense of belonging, student engagement and safety, and the ability to really self-regulate and manage their emotions, their reactions, their behaviors. This was written as part of the school improvement planning process back in the spring, going into the summer, and coming into the position as principal, I understood what it meant, and now I really understand what it means, right? After being in the position since July. This is an absolutely critical... in the position since July. This is an absolutely critical goal for middle schoolers, and our role as the adults in helping them develop these skills is essential for everything else to fall into place, for academics to excel, for their well-being to be there, for engagement, for teacher success, we have to get this right. So, some of the pieces that aren't listed on the screen, and the ways we're measuring this goal, which I, I would like to be able to come back and talk more specifics about the way we're gonna measure the effectiveness, is a decrease in inappropriate behaviors as measured by behaviors, referrals, documentations, with that, an increase in engagement and positive behavior, meeting the expectations that we have for students, and an increase in the overall outcomes for students as it relates to academic success, grades, attendance, and assessment results, both in class and on our standardized assessments. We do have some universal screeners in place at the middle school now, particularly the newest one is with math, and we have a diagnostic that we're able to give fall, winter, and spring with our new math curriculum, that is giving us more and more effective data as it relates directly to our curriculum, the new curriculum, the ready math curriculum that was purchased last year. So, real quickly about our data, this is just a snapshot, there are a million ways to slice up this data and provide an analysis, and I'm happy to come back with any questions you have. We can analyze it by the number of kids and how many referrals they're getting, the number of kids who aren't getting referrals, the demographics of the students getting referrals, there's a lot of ways that I was thinking about presenting it. This is where I landed for tonight, knowing that it was one of multiple presentations. So, just overall, our enrollment has also increased of approximately 50, 55 students. Our fights and physical aggression are pretty similar, six weeks into last year and six weeks into this year are pretty similar. There is a difference by 18 when you're looking at the physical fights and the physical aggression. The way, the reason why, in which they are combined today is because our, the way in which staff is reporting it, is physical aggression is lumped in with fighting as well. In the past, they were, they could have been separate entities, separate entries. And so, physical aggression in general means the physical act of getting ready to fight, or a verbal aggression to try to fight, but nothing physical necessarily comes out of it, which we can talk more on the specifics there. The suspensions are quite starkly different, I'm blanking on the term I want to use, a reduction of 133 from this point last year to this point this year. I can tell you, one of the biggest reasons why is we are suspending less for what would be coded as minor infractions versus major infractions, meaning minor infractions would be the classroom-based behaviors like defiance, cellphone infractions, tardies, attendance, frequent attendance issues, that after doing detentions or Saturday school, if they, in the past, if they didn't attend the detention, if they didn't attend Saturday school, they were, they were assigned in-school suspension, categorized as a suspension. We have not done that on those minor issues this year. So that's why there's such a drastic difference in suspensions from last year to this year. I'll come back to that later. The number of referrals at this point last year through Skyward, 710, the number of referrals, behavior forms submitted this year through our behavior form system is an increase up to 980. I don't have that specifically in the third column, because we, it is somewhat different, the way it was being documented last year and the way it has been documented this year. There are a number of behavior forms that are purely documentation with the expectation that it's to be able to track how students are doing, what's, what's happening with students, and to put them in the right intervention group for their tiered interventions. So, some of the things that are being submitted this year would not have been referred, referable last year. I'll come back to that as well at the end, as one of the things we're going to be looking at modifying. So, code of conduct, just real quickly, code of conduct is very much, yep, I skipped over it, very similar to his previous years, as it relates to dress code, as it relates to cell phones, as it relates to a variety of things. The response to those is what has changed. The response to those and the beha, the supports that we're putting in place in response to those misbehaviors is what has been different. So an additional, just like the high school mentioned, in addition to traditional consequences, we're coupling them with restorative practices and more supportive groups and one-on-one interventions with our clinical professionals, our student engagement advocates, social workers, et cetera, which is highlighted upcoming here. I'm gonna breeze through the tiered stuff, because it's very similar to the high school, you've already seen it, but these are the types of things we're doing with all students. Our support professionals, counselors, social workers are going into the classrooms and doing a lot of these with all students. For example, Ms. Medwitt at the eighth grade level recently met with every social studies class on a team and went over like grades, grades points, discussion about moving to the high school, what's needed to be able to grad, to be promoted from eight, those types of things are tier one interventions, that's what all students get. At the seventh grade level, they're rolling out social emotional learning lessons with all students as it relates to some of the bigger areas that we're struggling with, defiance, disrespect, bullying, those sorts of things are being done at that tier one level in the classroom with all students, academic counseling, et cetera. The tier two and three, these are actual groups that are up and running. They are up and running with groups of students anywhere from three to seven or eight students max, the average is about five or six kids at a time. The biggest ones that we're really pushing are the, the self-regulation, the self-esteem and body image, anger management, the first six there, the ones on the left, conflict resolution, bullying reduction. So we're having targeted groups with kids that have been referred through the behavior documentation for instances of bullying, or being the victim of bullying, they're also in groups receiving supports as it relates to coping, as it relates to how you manage, how you manage yourself when you're experiencing that type of situation. So those are all types of tier two interventions and tier three interventions that are more one-on-one, kind of individual check-ins, check-outs with individual students, et cetera. Yeah, so a little bit on grief and loss, not as much, a little bit on the wandering, the truancy and the tardiness, we're starting to kick that up, especially at seventh and eighth grade where we're seeing that becoming more of an issue. Just a little bit of data on who's, who's in those groups. So, at the sixth grade level, 83 students are receiving interventions as it relates to social emotional learning, mental health needs, the ones that we just mentioned previously. There are 83 students being seen by clinical professional, by student engagement advocate, by a social worker, by a counselor, et cetera. At the seventh grade level, a similar number, 89 students receiving those tiered interventions. So this is on top of math, science, social studies, language arts. This is during lunch, or this is during a planned period either once a week or multiple times a week, depending on the situation and the student. 54 students at eighth grade, that number's going to be increasing, particularly if we can increase the number of SEAs, which is one of the asks. But that's a little bit of the number of students that are being seen. And one of the big differences that I want to highlight here is that a lot of these students would not have been seen last year. And Ms. Shear could speak to that, being at the building. Half of them wouldn't have been seen, at least, if not more. The caseload for social workers is about 30 students, that they're, and maybe not, it's not necessarily a full session multiple times a week, maybe it's 20 minutes a week. 83 students being seen by a licensed or a trained professional in mental health or social work or those areas is the biggest difference from last year to this year. And I'll tell you, at the sixth grade level, there are a number of students that I know from being in the district for a while, and specifically finishing the last three months at an elementary school, that were having significant struggles that, in their fifth grade year, that have not, that are in some of these groups, and they're doing leaps and bounds better than they did when they were in fifth grade. A student that had multiple fights in fifth grade has not fought in sixth grade. And so, things like that, and that student automatically went into a group around conflict resolution. One of the sixth grade SEAs was talking to me today about a couple students that are in a bullying group. We know the students have been picking on other kids, they've been bullying other kids. Traditional systems punish those kids, or don't, aren't able to address it at all. They either suspend them, and then they hope it gets better, or they put them on a contract that's, talk to that kid anymore, and that's it. Now these kids are getting, from trained professionals, the impact of your bullying, how that affects the school community, how that affects the kids that you're, that you're working, that you're doing that to, the power of your words, the power of kindness. And we had kids that were literally articulating this week how important it is that the words that they're choosing when they're interacting with kids that they may be traditionally picking on. So that is something that does not happen, or has not happened historically, to this extent especially, right? Just a little bit, because I know that this has been a question, how do you be, how can you get into one of these groups? It can come from a variety of angles. So it can come from a parent, it could come from a teacher, staff member, or the student themselves, right? A lot of times, it's happened after behaviors, that's probably the majority of it. So the students that are in some of the conflict resolution groups, or the anger management groups, they're usually due to us seeing and it being documented through our behavior documentation system, that this student struggles with de-escalation. They get angry, and it takes a lot for them to de-escalate their anger. So they need help, right? They need an appropriate research-based intervention to help them cope with that, and be able to do that on their own, or have strategies to be able to do it more effectively. And that's what they're working on in these groups. They're oftentimes in addition to formal consequences, right? So if a student got into a fight and they had a suspension, the suspension is, if especially, if it's an in-school suspension, maybe it's for something else, or whatever it is. In the in-school suspension room, which we call Restore You, we are working, we have professionals going into that room to do some of these interventions with students. We have our licensed teacher, who's actually still here, I think, who's able to do some of that work with students as well, and do restorative reflection sheets when they come in, help them with their, with their work and their homework. So, also, when students are out and they come back in for re-entry, historically, it was a re-entry with either a dean or an administrator and saying, here's what you did, here's what you're not gonna be doing, here's the rule that you broke, don't do it again, or this is what your consequence will be. Now it's a restorative conversation. Now it's, okay, here's what you broke, here's the rule you broke, you can't do this again, but also, you're gonna be seeing Dr. Bivins once a week for conflict resolution. That's the biggest difference with this system, is we have a layer of additional support that we never did before for a lot more kids. Okay. Also, we've been tracking the number of formalized practices as it relates to restorative practices. So that's anywhere from the basic conversations that can happen, the chats that can happen on the fly, in the classroom, as well as the formal circles. So this isn't the total number of circles that have happened, this is the number of students who have been involved in them, which is a lot of students that have either been in a formal circle or have been documented to be in those conversations restoratively with student, with staff. There's been a lot of push-in classroom, either observations, classroom circles at that tier one level, or after a situation has happened, or a classroom is struggling, a teacher is struggling with one class period, we've been having people push in and provide this type of support. And then, all-grade restorative conversations, circles involving staff. We've had five of those all-grade type of conversations with, with students across the grade level. We need to do more of these. One of the questions is, how do we get back to, how do we reinforce our expectations? We need to do these broader conversations restoratively with expectations, with consequences that would be coming, but also make sure that we're restoring the harm that's been done. When a fight happens, or when a major conflict happens, it's not just the two or three individuals directly involved, it's everyone else that saw it and was impacted by it. They're also harmed too. That's something that we haven't done a great job of, is restoring the harm that's been done to the people that saw it and were impacted by it, that are scared, that are worried. Immediate action plans. So, fighting and safety has been our number one priority. We are, we're having good days and we're having bad days, as it relates to fighting particularly. There have, contrary to what has been said, we have not had a fight every day. We have had not a ton of days without a fight, but we've had, we have had more than one day without a fight, a formal, physical altercation fight. But one fight, in my opinion, is too many. The number of fights that are listed here are way too many, and that's, that's not okay with anyone, and we all, we all understand that. Students understand that. There are a lot of students that are saying, there's too many fights, there's too many fights, and we agree. So, the other areas that are more of the minor issues are tardiness and roaming the halls, cellphone infractions, defiance, disrespect. These are those issues that we have not tackled as directly as we've been working on fighting and safety, because the priority right now has been on fighting and safety, right? So, teachers are struggling with this, and they're getting frustrated with this, and I acknowledge that. And so that's something that we want to tackle next. And some of this leads to the bigger issues, so we know that they sometimes are connected. But we are working on action plans, we've been working on for the past week. We met with PD, our professional development cadre and our leadership team yesterday after school to kind of formalize a few more things. We have started some tardy sweeps, we have started some plans for either lunch detentions or Saturday schools as it relates to tardies and roaming, but all of those, we want to make sure are restorative as well, not just you're coming on a Saturday to sit. We want you to come on a Saturday and restore why you're not getting to class on time. That's another big difference from in the past. And that's hard to do, that takes planning, that takes personnel, that takes teamwork, and we have put a lot more effort in the first bullet point than in the other bullet points, full disclosure. We also need to improve our classroom management plans and our systems at the classroom level, and support the teachers with that. One of the things that has happened is that we have additional staff, we have the T-charts of classroom managed, classroom managed with support, and office managed. What has happened is a lot of things have moved into the middle, and it's become more of a catch-all than what it was originally intended to be. So teachers are calling for support a lot more when they should be just classroom managed. But teachers are frustrated, teachers want help, so we have to create a better system in the classroom for them to be able to manage more of those things in the classroom. What happens when we're going to classroom, classroom to classroom, is when something is a little bit more serious happening somewhere else in the building, and we have people responding to a variety of things, we're stretched. And so it's hard to get to everything sometimes. I think the majority of staff are feeling like Dr. Underwood mentioned, people are there right away, and, but there are times where we haven't gotten right to every single classroom, because sometimes we're stretched, especially if we have staff members out, sick or in trainings. We've had TCI training the past two weeks, and a lot of our support staff are in the TCI training during the day, when we need them in the school too. So, it's a catch-22. Our cafeteria needs a lot of work, a lot of work. That's one of our, my biggest concerns, is the procedures in the cafeteria during lunch, but also creating a better space that's, we can utilize that in a better way. The biggest, one of the biggest issues is 350 kids in that cafeteria at once. That's way too many kids. And so, we are looking at splitting lunches up into either more periods or into different spots throughout the school. We're considering gym decks with tables, but that, those aren't cafeterias, right? So that, we only have one space that's ideal for food, and that's the cafeteria. So, one of the things that asks on the last page you'll see coming next is the ability to have more people either helping in the cafeteria, so that our support staff can pull groups, or teachers pulling groups of kids for relationship building in their classroom during lunch, but that comes with a fee, because a duty-free lunch. So if we can figure out a way to provide teachers to voluntarily say, I would like to work in the cafeteria or work with a group, we have very clear procedures as to how that happens and what they do, and how that works, and which kids go where, and those sorts of things, we can clearly articulate that, but we need more people to be able to do that during lunch right now. Or we need to drastically change the schedule, so we have more lunch periods. Where the high school has AB lunches, we need to explore something like that if we, because we have too many kids in the cafeteria right now, at all three grade levels. 360 sixth graders, it may be a little less, I might be fibbing a little bit. Fibbing's not the right word. It was 360 at the beginning of the year, it has dropped a little bit. Staffing, I do want to mention, and I want to thank our HR office for support around TA hires. We've been short TAs all up until this, most recently, particularly special education TAs, which oftentimes work with students with the more challenging behaviors. And so we've had subs in and out for those TA positions, and HR has done a really nice job supporting us getting those hired here in the last week, special education department as well. So wanted to thank you, and thanks to Jacinda Cromer for helping us there. We are able to, we are fully staffed with TAs here in the next couple days. That will help with behaviors and, and systems as well. So, requests, one of the big safety issues that I see is, when we're fully staffed and everyone's there and we have no sub shortages, we can have a person at the front desk, making sure that people, when they come in that door, they go straight into the office. When we're not fully staffed and we have people out and we gotta pull people, then there's no, there's not a guarantee that there's someone at that front desk every day. And so then, the expectation is that the office staff, when they buzz someone in, they're making sure that they're coming in. And usually that works, sometimes... And usually that works, sometimes, I'm fearful of if someone would be able to walk past. So, if we can have one additional SRS, or a staff member that could be assigned permanently to that desk as their job, I know the high school has SRS that just rotates, that's just one of the stations. I don't see us being able to do that right now, because our SRS are all over the building, responding. So if we can have someone at that front desk, that would be a main request. I'll jump to number three, that's my next request, is funds to be able to provide more smaller groups for lunch. There are a lot of kids that are coming out of the cafeteria saying, it's just so loud, I can't, the acoustics, it's so many kids, it's just loud, and I need lunch to be a little bit quieter for my downtime. If we could have two or three classrooms of like ten to fifteen kids just eating lunch with a teacher, that would be amazing. The teacher could build relationships with those students, the students could have a space where they could go during lunch, where it's quieter, and then if you have 200 kids in the cafeteria, that's much more manageable than 300, right? Or 320. So that would be my next request. I put six to nine staff members, $25 an hour, one hour per day. Then, this one, we would like to see at the eighth-grade level, more interventions going, more small groups going. And right now, we're feeling a little stretched with getting that up and running at the eighth-grade level. So, that would be where I would emphasize an additional SEA if possible. So, those are my notes from earlier, I want to make sure I didn't miss anything. Got the TAs? Oh, the parent, one of the parents earlier mentioned the parent involvement survey I did send out on Thursday. We've already had double-digit responses. There are parents that are, want to come in and provide support during, in hallways, or at lunch already, or doing some small group stuff, like intervention or enrichment type of opportunities. So that's really exciting, that's been, that was a collaborative effort with the PTA and our parent advisory committee, which is really exciting to see. So, I love that parents want to be there and help. They want to be a part of the solution, which is, goes back to my initial thank you. There's been so many parents and community members that have commented that they want to help. They want this to succeed, which is inspiring and invigorating. So, I will, that's my last slide, I'll pause for questions, thank you.
Any questions for Joe?
No, thank you, and I certainly support the addressing the cafeteria. I was there on this past week, and spent some time in the middle school and sometimes the high school, and happened to catch lunchtime in each place, back-to-back, and, and you had a whole team missing, so you didn't even have your full 350, and it's just, that space, even if you had more adults, it's just too loud. I can see it, I mean, for people who just, you know, everyone has to talk louder to be heard, and so it just creates this, but the acoustics are so poor in there. I mean, in con, great, direct contrast to the high school, which has been remodeled in more recent times. I mean, it was also filled with kids, very, you know, engaged. I mean, they're older, of course, older kids don't talk quite in the same manner that young kids, but, but a total different atmosphere, I mean, just in terms of, just from a sound perspective. So, I mean, I, the idea of having small groups of kids eating in classrooms with teachers just seems beneficial on so many levels versus having more, pushing more adults into the cafeteria.
And even if teachers don't feel comfortable running like a group like that, if they could go into the cafeteria and we would have our interventionists run those groups, right?
Right, right.
Either way.
Yeah.
Just having more small groups of students out, and reducing the number of kids in, there would be great.
Would be a really positive.
And it could rotate, it wouldn't have to be the same kids every time, or forever.
Right, right. We could explore that, but I, I like, John, I, I'm, I'm a little concerned about our budget expenses this year just because we have had so many new people, and they're different titles, so I'm not, I can't translate it in my mind from, like, because they don't line up with the old position, so it's hard for me to, I mean, you know, I know on paper, at least at one point in time, we were told that, that it all, it's all coming out right, but I'm, I don't feel that confident, just because of so many balls in the air, so, if we could be convinced that we actually have some discretionary funds for, these are relatively small asks, I mean, yours in the high school, for some additional, you know, hallway monitors, and I certainly would support it, it, once we have clarification on our budget situation, so.
Understood.
Thank you.
I had a question. On your tier-one and tier-two and three, the home visits, when these kids are acting out, how many times is it gonna take before you all go into the home? Because this is in writing, but I haven't heard of a lot of home visits going on in the community. So, is this something new, or?
We've had home-
With the middle school, I'm talking only about middle school kids, not elementary.
I can't speak to how it compares to the past years, but I can speak that we have had teachers do home visits already this year at that tier-one level, and I go, it would get into the tier-two. There have been, like, team facilitators that have done home visits. So the lead teacher of the teams have gone to homes. We've had some staff members go to, um, support services staff members go to the homes. We've had a lot of parents in, a lot of parents have been coming in as well to the school. And so, I would say that's more common than us going to the home, but we have had home visits at that tier-one level, just to build relationships and check in, and say, yeah, and your, your son is acting up a little bit, and-
I just think we need, with this middle school, because it looks like it was very, you know, you had a lot going on, that the home visit needs to be, if it's on here, listed as a tier, then it needs to happen.
Okay, yeah.
And then, sit down as a team, instead of parent, because a lot of these parents are not coming into the school. They feel intimidated.
Sure.
So, you're wrong about that. Those are the parents that you need to be at their house, and develop this relationship. I can say, out of ten, only two come into the school, so.
I've actually seen that different this year. We've had, we haven't had any parents not come in this year.
Is it on the visiting list?
Yeah, sure.
Because everyone I've talked to has not been up to the school, and they've been having problems with their kids.
Well, I, we haven't had all, you know, thousand parents come up to the school, but what I, I guess what I'm saying is, when we've asked for a parent to come up, we've never had a parent not come. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. But there's parents, we've done more phone call, they haven't come every time. Like, we've done phone calls, there's been some home visits, so.
Because you know what, if you go to the home, you see there's no furniture, probably hardly no food. All this has an impact on what's going on with the kid, okay? You can't sugarcoat that. And some of that has an impact on the behaviors. So that's why I see this as an important piece of it.
Okay.
So that's my personal opinion.
Perfect, yep.
Any other questions for Joe?
Um, oh, go ahead.
Likewise, I want, I'm sorry, did I? Uh, Paul.
So, I mean, earlier you had mentioned that you were looking at maybe reworking, training with regards to providing in-room supports for staff members who are having issues with controlling a classroom. Could you, could you kind of go over what the procedure is for today? Say, if a staff member had multiple students who are being defiant and having issues with the room?
Yeah, yeah, so, the, the general plan is when the student reaches a point where they've gone, tier-one interventions have been attempted in the classroom, kind of what Mr. Elvire was saying earlier. And the student is still unsuccessful, and behavior is still happening, then the expectation is they call for support. What is happening, not in every classroom, and not that same classroom all the time, you know, it's jumping straight to calling before putting in some interventions in place upfront. So, for example, what we talked about yesterday at our leadership team meeting with some of our teacher leaders was maybe some more visual representations of a behavior management plan that is kind of a warning system for students to know, when am I reaching the point where I might get called? There might be a call for someone to come in and check in on me, or ask me to step out in the hall and reset, or ask me to leave the classroom. What is happening is it's somewhat unpredictable for students right now in different classrooms. So some, some classrooms, a student does something and gets sent out right away, and in other classrooms, does the same thing, and gets a couple chances before they get called on. That's what we need to clear up and be more consistent with. Yep.
Anything for Joe? Joe, I really appreciate your-
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, I'm sorry.
I try to go last.
Just my previous question about data from last year to this, to the high school, are we gonna be able to disaggregate the difference between behavior forms and referrals so that we can get a true representation of whether the numbers are up or down?
Thank you for the reminder. So, we are gonna go back to direct entry to Skyward, instead of direct entry to just behavior forms. The purpose for the behavior forms originally, in, I think someone made this comment earlier when we were planning for a lot of this, I haven't sat in the UMS principal's seat before. And so, the idea of the behavior form was that it was linked directly to the tier-one behavior intervention documentation form, directly linked to the tier-two, all on Google Forms. So we wanted it all to be streamlined through the same platform, with the idea that then, that be, that behavior incidences would be then taken into Swiss. And then, any consequence of suspension that is required in Skyward to be reported to the state will go to, to, to Skyward, to Swiss later, or to CISS later, excuse me, all the acronyms. But what we have noticed is that it has created a little bit of skewing of those referral numbers because we, it's become a documentation form as well as a referral form. And so we wanted to get back to where it's more consistent. And we're struggling, the, one of the biggest concerns for teachers, so, and the other reasons, I'm kind of jumping around because it's late. One of the biggest reasons for using the behavior form is when you have a behavior Google Form, you can then look at the spreadsheet of all the entries, when you have collaboration access. Every staff member has collaborative access to that, every spreadsheet. The idea was total transparency, because I knew coming in that there were concerns about messing with numbers, to make the numbers look better, right? So I wanted total transparency on the sheet. And now teachers are getting lost in the sheet. So when they go to the sheet, there's all these forms, and they're, they're just trying to find their student that they're struggling with, and it's, they're having a hard time finding it.
Gotcha.
Whereas on Sky, on Skyward, if we were to enter it directly into Skyward, they could just click on their student and just see their student's behavior record. And so, teachers are getting lost in that spreadsheet, and teachers are also getting a little overwhelmed by seeing all these other students that they don't know. They don't want to, they don't need to know, according to a lot of students, that this student did this on Monday, because they're not on their team, but they're, so, it has become a little bit more overwhelming than we anticipated, and not serving our, the purpose, the original intent. So, we are going, we're planning, gonna have a discussion with the whole staff very soon about going back to Skyward as direct entry, instead of the behavior forms. Doesn't change, we'll, we'll be able to upload all of those into Skyward. That stuff's not going away, it'll all be uploaded. And it's all there, it'll be, it won't be deleted, it'll stay there. But we want it to be a little bit more consistent from last year to this year, and more teacher-user friendly for teachers.
And then, the same request, I hope that your substitutes are also gonna get the same amount of training and preparedness so that they stay, and they want to stay, and, you know, they feel comfortable that if something happens in their classroom, that they, they know what their, the appropriate response is supposed to be.
Yep, I've noted that in my notes, to make sure that we do that. I will say that Cindy Zarbuck, who is kind of our sub-coordinator for the building, did a really good job this summer making sure that the sub-plans are very clearly outlined about who to call and when, and what people's roles are, and who the grade-level administrators are, and the differences. But, just on paper is, is not nearly enough. So, we need to do a little bit more train, a lot more training with our subs.
My last thing, just a plug, because I'm a big proponent of this, and middle schoolers are still kids, babies in my eyes. I wish we could take some of those kids out of the cafeteria just for a little while and get them outside. I know there's a lot of red tape involved with that, but my goodness, that would do so much to de-escalate the tension.
Yeah.
It would build relationships between those kids, even if it's just, you know, I, I mean, I, you can't do off-campus lunch with those kiddos, but just getting them outside to walk around the block or something, when they've finished eating, or before they eat.
Yep, that could be one of these groups that a staff member has.
I would love to see that, and I, I'm sure a lot of kids would benefit, their grades would be better, their behavior would be better, and I bet the teachers would just love to get out there and get a fresh air.
Because, you're right, because a middle schooler at UMS, other than PE, and that's very structured, has no opportunity to kind of free time, other than in the halls, when we're telling them to stop running and stop horse-playing, and at lunch, when we tell them to sit down and be quiet and stop horse-playing.
They need it, they just need it, you know, their brains are so overwhelmed, but-
I noticed our, Mr. Boaz is still back there, our consultant, so, you know, we've got that space between the high school and the middle school, and we've got a door directly out of the cafeteria.
Yeah, the open patio area, yeah.
That, just make that mental note, please. Good, good.
And we have those courtyards, too.
Because, and the courtyards, which is enclosed, so there's no safety issues, there's obviously supervision. But there's, there's not-
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure he heard that.
Some of the other issues.
No, I appreciate that.
You got your work cut out for you.
Yeah.
And I'll just say, I don't remember if Mr. Boaz remembers this, I don't, I think he's a little too young for this, but with some institutional knowledge, it used to be that at lunch, teachers went out for the last fifteen minutes of lunch and supervised, basically, outdoor recess at the middle school, before there was such a thing as an aquatic center. There was a space out there, and the teachers would go out, and as a teacher, I would go out and collect my sixth or seventh-hour class, depending on which lunch I had, and bring them in from lunch after they had recess. And so, it was a fun way for me to play either hoops or, or four-square with, with eighth graders.
Yeah. We're not ready for that, let me say that, but 315 kids outside right now is not what I want. But the small groups, I like, small groups out there, rotating those, I like. But we can get there, we can get there.
I just wanted to compliment other board members, make sure I don't get, okay. Thank you for being direct and transparent, and just recognizing that we've got challenges and issues, and we're facing them head-on, and I appreciate that. The, this is really, Dolores is still here, so for both of you, it's too early. But, the reason we embarked on this, the stated reason for embarking on this, that there's a lot of side benefits, was because of, and I've forgotten the word, disproportionality. Disproportionality, I thought there was a different word. Relative risk ratio? Okay, disproportionality. And so, at some point in time, I want to see the stats presented to see if this solution, if this solution is, is actually, if this change is actually solving what we thought it was going to resolve.
Yeah.
And if it's not, then-
Yeah, and I think that's a great point, and I think directly tying that to our interventions, our, our system of interventions will be key. So, I would actually like to be able to come back and have multiple presentations to the board because it holds us accountable to making sure that we're constantly evaluating, monitoring our systems and our data, from a race and demographic perspective as well, and being able to document, okay, how many students of color who have received particular discipline referrals and are now in intervention groups, what is the effect of that intervention across race, across demographics, in terms of repeating that type of behavior or not, right? What is, how is that closing disproportionality over time by how we're responding to behaviors, instead of just punitive, right? That's the, at the core, what this whole change is about, right?
Correct.
So, I would love to be able to do that frequently with the board.
Okay. I see Dolores's head is shaking yes as well, so, we're good on that, all right?
Yeah.
It is already 10 o'clock. Any, any other questions? Thank you, Joe, thank you so much. We have no call for any future special or executive meetings, to my knowledge. It's after tonight, but that's not a future, a future meeting would be some other night, at this point. We, do we, before next action item, before next business meeting?
No.
It's after the next business meeting, yeah. All right, we're ready for superintendent's report.
Yeah, so just a couple of quick things. One, I'd like to thank board members who have come into the schools and seen, I think it was very valuable for Peggy to see the middle school lunch in full swing. And I think the, you know, there weren't students yelling or screaming, it was the general noise level made it so that she and I could not have a conversation in the lunchroom, and we were standing as close as, as John and I are. And, and I appreciate that, I think that that kind of knowledge is, it goes a long way. And I encourage other board members to, to do the same. I also want to thank the board members for their continued support and, and challenging of, of the systems, of the, of the decisions, and of me. On a different note, I want to give a big shout out to two people at the high school who got a shout out over the weekend that I'm not sure was heard by very many people who are in this room. But Tim Broker and Brianna Morton were, basically, they're, they're two teachers at the, at the school who are both very closely involved in our, our theater program. They gave up their time without pay, without compensation, for several weeks to help out the Penguin Project. And the Penguin Project is a nationally organized project that presents plays and musicals for students with cognitive and physical disabilities with the support of helpers who are part of the theater troops from around Champaign-Urbana. And so there were a number of Urbana students who were helpers. The Penguin Project, this is its second or third year at Urbana High School. And this year they did High School Musical. And my wife and I went on Friday night and it was absolutely amazing for so many reasons. But probably the biggest was to see the support and caring that the mentor theater students were giving to the performers who were so excited to be on stage and so into their roles that I would say that the, the people in the audience responded as enthusiastically as when the UHS drama students put on High School Musical three years ago. It was, it was a very good production and probably the best thing was, was the, the support of our students by other students as well as by Tim Broker and Brianna Morton. Now, the Penguin Project is not ours, they did not put it on. They just gave up their time so that the, the directors and, and parents who support the Penguin Project could do this. Students who performed in the Penguin Project were, as I said, from all over the area, from as far away as Tuscola and, and, and Tolono to Mohammed, Champaign, Urbana, and Rantoul. And there was one email that I know the board got from a parent. And I, I would echo this, that an email is quite insufficient in expressing the gratitude that we all feel towards Urbana High School, Tim, Brianna, and all the rest who made the Penguin Project possible. We know that there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes to make a production like this happen. I want to let you know that it did not go unnoticed. The project takes up time and space in the high school. And, and it is a, truly a community event. There were more people from outside the Champaign-Urbana area in that theater than from the, the typical Urbana crowd. But there were also a number of people that are just fans of Urbana Theater who came and saw that event. So I, I told Brianna and Tim that I was going to give them a big shout out. And as I said, this, this email, I think, did a wonderful job. In addition, I would like to thank board member Brenda Carter for attending a meeting with me with a board member and director of Promise Healthcare, Frances Nelson, and Smile Healthy, who are the new operators of the Urbana School-Based Health Center. It was a very productive meeting and engaging meeting. We kind of started to set out some big plans and talk about how to increase participation. As the board knows, last year was a very difficult year because the School-Based Health Center lost the ability to give vaccines. And as, as Promise Healthcare has taken it over as of July first, they do have a six-month process to get vaccines back into the system. So right now, that is having a, 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 I would say negative effect on medical visits to the, to the center, because this time of year is usually vaccinations and flu shots as a major draw into the center. However, one of the things that we did was we talked about the importance of, of walk-ins. And the fact that in, in the past, it's always been appointment only. And they have the capacity now to handle walk-ins. And so that will allow parents a little bit more flexibility for when students are sick. They can just show up. And so we are actually starting, I just received the posters today. And these are being translated into Spanish and French and these will be going out to all families via email and other formats. But basically, I just wanted to say, it's, it's been very exciting for me to see kind of the change and the, the rebirth of excitement around the School-Based Health Center, having it locally operated rather than operated by, by an organization that wasn't here in Urbana. So the School-Based Health Center, for those of you who don't know, is located at Urbana High School. It's right at the corner of Urbana High School, next to the visitor parking lot, before you enter the Tiger Lane Circular Drive there near the athletic facility. It's just right on the corner. We do have some signage that went up at the beginning of the 2016-17 school year. Walk-ins are welcome. They also, very exciting, have a mental health practitioner again, which they did not have for all of last school year. And Brenda, I believe that they said that the mental health practitioner is actually booked solid now. And, and is, and is seeing, is seeing students throughout the entire day. The other nice thing that I'll just say is by moving it back to local, local ownership, medical records between Frances Nelson and the Urbana School-Based Health Center are now meshed. So yeah, they're, they're integrated. And so if a person has gone to Frances Nelson for a number of years and then goes to the School-Based Health Center, those records are the same. They don't have to do that. And so that to me is a huge benefit for our, our students and families. We're also excited at working with Sean Ashir, last thing about the health center, working with Sean Ashir and the, and the director of, of Promise Healthcare. We're opening up access to sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen-year-olds that are adult education, who have not had access to the School-Based Health Center before. And that, I think, is an important, important piece of making sure that we're serving all of our students and recognizing that adult ed students are, are students as well. With that, the last thing, I'd just like to thank everyone for the amount of participation and engagement that has been happening. This year, we've had more events related to the strategic planning action teams. Those action teams are underway and they've been incredibly well-attended, very engaging. We also had tonight a parent academy at Urbana Middle School and that was well-attended. We also got our new website up and running. And so that was one other thing that we flipped over the weekend. And just to make sure that the board members are clear on this, that is a temporary website as a placeholder so that we can then engage with the community to say, hey, what do you really need from our website? Where, where are things? One reason why we needed to do that was to improve the stability of the, of the platform. We really believe that it was still suffering from some issues from last year's viruses in terms of deep in the code. And so the new website is up and running. It's cleaner, faster, and hopefully a little bit more reliable than our previous one. And that's it for my, for my report.
Board reports.
I just wanted to say one thing. I'm so happy to have Promise Health there, but also I want you to know we're into the Illinois Managed Care. And for the vaccines, we're inviting all the students, I want them to get there and see that Blue Cross, Managed Care, Blue Cross, and Harmony will not be accepted. So in January, those parents that need to change over, Malina, Meridian, Align Eye Care is still available for them. And if they just got their insurance cards, they have time to change. And healthcare consumers, if the social workers don't know how to do it, healthcare consumers will help the families. Because Promise Healthcare is just, Promise Health has been fantastic. My son went to the clinic and he had severe asthma, but he played ball. And they saved his life, put him on a medication. He had no more, he's still on the medicine and he flies here from Atlanta to go to Promise Healthcare because he doesn't want any other medical attention based on having that. So I'm glad it's back and we want all our students to use it. The other thing I want to say, put, mark your calendars starting Monday, so that teachers and administrators, talk to your kids about mental health. Monday starts Mental Health Awareness Week. Pick something, psychosis or bipolar disorder, some topic to talk to them about so they can understand and not allow them to think it's a stigma, something's wrong with you because you have this diagnosis. If you educate them, they can go back and educate their parents. So please, this is very important, to mark your calendars nationwide. It is Mental Health Awareness Week. Thank you.
I would just like to say a couple of things. Number one, I attended the Walk as One that we had at Ivanhoe Estates in Urbana. And unfortunately, I couldn't stay very long, but when I was there, it was very, very well-attended. Many people were out, many people were excited to come out and talk to us. And we were able to give a lot of great community resources as well as talk to them about our own resources here at the school district that we had, one of them being the Public-Based Health Center. Another thing I wanted to say was I attended along with Ann Hall, Benita Rollins Gay, Ruth Ann Fisher, and Peggy Patton, the Illinois Association of School Board Meetings. And, and Benita and Ruth Ann actually received master board members, as well as myself as maintaining master board membership. In order to do these, to attain master board member, you have to attend different events that the association is having. And you get points for each one of these. Everyone has worked hard at attending different events and learning and keeping up to date in things that are going on with the state that affect the board. We had two breakout sessions that night. One was about SB 100 and the other one was about ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act. And we split up and took turns going to both and it was very, very informative and very well worth our time, so.
Other board reports? I'd like to remind everybody that we're going into closed session here shortly. All right, so a motion to, if there's no other board reports, a motion to adjourn to closed session for purposes of discussing personnel issues.
So moved.
So moved.
I forgot the clause, the, all the personnel clause. All right, moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Member Carter.
Yes.
Member Hall.
Yes.
Member Patton.
Yes.
Member Kloski.
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes, Vice President Rollins Gay, and President Demmett.
Yes, there'll be no action following. Thank you, everyone.